Okay, 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 we're gonna go ahead and get started here tonight. Walter, how you doing? Hey, we're gonna go ahead and get started, folks. Appreciate everybody being here tonight on this last Tuesday of the month. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I'll look to Pam for the roll call.
Mayor Tran.
Here.
Let's make them yes.
Present.
Councilmember Montana.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Present.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much, Pam. And go ahead with the pledge of allegiance, ladies and gentlemen. I'll go ahead and lead the pledge. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to announcement of conflict of interest. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna ask one question this evening because the campaign contribution question is tied to development budget applications or contracts, none of which we have on the agenda tonight. But I'd ask the mayor and council at this time to please disclose any personal or financial conflict that has been first related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. And so, the councilmember Dominguez, vice mayor Dominguez, and councilmember Montana. Records reflect none. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of agenda. Looking to the council, vice mayor.
Move up to the agenda.
We have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by councilmember Montana, all in favor. Aye. Motion is carried, thank you very much. And next, we're gonna go to public forum. Now's the time for the public forum. I'll turn around here and welcome everybody to tonight's meeting again. Looking forward to hearing from you. I want to ask that the public forum will be one minute per person. We have lots of people tonight. I know we have a lot of guests, and so I want to make sure that we do a good rate this evening. So, one other thing that we're also gonna do is you can just stand and speak. We have a little room facing you, and it'll say move in. So many persons, probably back and forth in this room. It'll be easy for you to just stand and state your name, and our C clerk will take notes. How's that sound? Yeah? Okay, great. And I do see three rows, so maybe we can go first row, and then second row, and then third row. Kind of a natural demotion. So, I want to start over here. If you have, you know, disregard, not everybody's gonna speak. Just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Okay? Here we go.
The job means here is the loop works, and we're putting together a PRT system that's going to be convenient, quick, and safe. Convenient because we're gonna have full stations in the transit area, so it'll be easy for people to get to a local station. Once they get there, the cabs are waiting for them, and they'll be able to leave immediately. So that's part of the convenience. That's also the fact that the cab is waiting there and is ready to take them immediately, along with the non-stop ability of this technology. So it takes you directly to your destination at thirty miles per hour without stopping. That makes it quick. And the safe portion is that who do you get into that cab, or someone that you approve to get into that cab with you? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, please. Yes?
Hi, just like remind everybody, the Nopitas Chamber Conference is having their crab feed and auction coming on Friday, March 6th. And it'll be at Damarack Hall. Get your tickets while the early bird price is available. And it may sell out, so don't wait too long to get your tickets to the craft.
Excuse me, sir, would you, for the record, would you have to state your name? For the record, would you come to me? I know who you are, but just state the name for the record. How much is the early bird? The early bird price? What's the early bird price?
Fifty-five.
Okay, thanks.
Record price sixty.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yoli Garcia, and I'm resident of Nopitas. And since you're looking at budget, I'd like to have you consider, we have affordable, we need affordable housing. And I'm looking for like the teachers in Nopitas so they don't have to, you know, drive in. And perhaps consider the city purchasing land or a building, and building affordable housing for our young teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, public forum, thank you. You're here for the public forum, now's the time. Now, yes.
Good evening, my name is Jackie Romero. Tonight, I represent the youth of Nopitas. I think it's really important to make the decisions in the budget tonight that you take in consideration the youth that sometimes have no voice. We do have some here tonight that they don't think that their voice matters, and so I hope that you keep them in mind. Also, I hope that you do your due diligence in evaluating new programs. Sometimes the services that you're providing to the youth and to the community isn't intangible. You can't really put a price tag on it. For example, the energy that was created with the community coming together to go watch The Little Mermaid. Over fifteen hundred community members were served muses, rent, and many more that have been produced since nineteen eighty-two. The audience laughed, cried, and connected through the actors' performances. In a world of technology, we've got an art of communication, an art to create a connection to people and to ourselves. Not only does it teach discipline and technique, teamwork, work ethic, and how to overcome failure, how to grace to accept success, and most importantly, passion. And these kids here have a passion for the arts. So please keep them in mind when you're looking at all the programs, all the programs, most importantly, the theater programs.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Baker. And mine is a lot shorter, but basically the same. We respectfully ask both the council and the city staff to increase the amount of money allotted for the theater program so we can continue to offer quality and then keep and retain quality people that go on the theater program. So we would like to see an increase in the budget.
Hi, my name is Lisa Miano, and I'm also a theater mom. And I'm here to also represent the children of Children's Theater Program at Nopitas. And we thank you all for what you have done thus far with the theater, as well as joining The Little Mermaid. It's wonderful to see you there. And we need to continue that type of program. And I know you did a lot of work, did surveys earlier on in the workshops, to make a bigger and robust theater program. And with that, we've all been working really hard to try and accomplish that. But to accomplish that, we will need your help and assistance in providing some additional funds in the budget for next fiscal year. And we'd be happy to meet, but we need your effort to talk further.
My name is Ben Noem, resident of Nopitas. And I was at the, on the table conversation yesterday with our leaders from the school board and from the city. And one of the things that came up was about city pride in Nopitas. And what we see in the youth and theater arts program is part of the pride of Nopitas. And so I urge you today to continue that conversation and look to support what we have in Nopitas. They're wonderful. All you council members, I saw at the performances, and you enjoyed it, and so I hope that continues.
Public forum continuing. You're here for the public forum, please. Now's your time.
Yes? Time anymore. Actually, sounds like the program is revving the program. I grew up in it, actually, but my daughter doesn't. So, appreciate your support, and it's been a great program. We're able to have the system all the time, and it's just.
Okay, public forum continues. You're here for the public forum, now's your time. Look to my left, look to my right, all around the room. There's no one else, go one, go one twice, public forum, that's concluded. Thank you very much. And moving on to item number six, consider the February first, twenty-twenty parade and approve fee waiver. Steve? Or Renee? Or Ashwin?
Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor. So this is in response to, we had a discussion at the January fourth meeting about a potential parade from Nopitas High School. This is the follow-up, requesting of fee waivers for the special event permit. This will be, the parade will be held on February first. And so, there's a special event permit fee of nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents that we're asking for a waiver from council. We have twenty-five thousand dollars allocated towards donations, fee waivers, and events in this fiscal year. And with this, at this point, we have about eighteen thousand four hundred and forty left in that account. This would take it to, I believe, seventeen thousand four hundred and nine dollars. And in addition to the fee waiver itself, for the special event permit, we will have some limited staff support from public police and fire on the day of the event for traffic control to ensure a safe community event.
Thank you. I have a question related to the fund, not necessarily the event, but what happens to this fund as the fiscal year ends and we move into the next fiscal year? Is it, it doesn't roll over, I know that.
We generally, so at least the two years that I've been here, we basically start over with an amount. Now, this year it was twenty-five thousand, because if you recall, we had also talked about council members individually, maybe behaving as a host event, so we added twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you so much. So if there's any community groups out here, fill out one of these applications for a week with a nonprofit. Are there any further comments about my colleagues?
I'll move up to you.
One second.
We got.
So I do have a second, but I also would like, in there, it also says that something will come back, a review or something. And are those someplace we could go back and look at, as a council?
For specific events?
All the events.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted, as long as we can go back.
And the clerk and our city clerk is not here today, but yes, they're the ones.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by councilmember Van, a second by vice mayor Dominguez, all in favor? Aye. Any votes? The motion is carried, thank you very much. Moving on to lucky number seven, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget study session. I'll look to my right. Steve, the carries.
Go ahead and start, pick it up. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Tran, members of the council, and members of the public. By the way, if you see people that might want to see but don't want to stand, we do have a little bit of work next door right across the hall here where they can sort of like, it's on videos that might, like, yeah, so they can observe as well. And they can step in if they want to, but if they don't stand, feel free to let them know. We are pleased to welcome you to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget study session. This evening, we're going to kick off the council input and community engagement process to develop our city budget. One of tonight's objectives is to provide an update of the city's fiscal outlook. For the first time, we'll be employing a new best practice of looking fiscally forward ten years previous versus our previous five-year outlook. Our finance director, Walter Rossman, will present this preliminary ten-year general fund forecast. Deputy Walter is staff guy for the city's fiscal outlook. You as the city council will now be able to provide feedback, other directly inform the budget development in the areas of the budget calendar, community engagement, major accomplishments, our city's plans, council priority areas, and fiscal policy review. We'll also present preliminary feedback from our currently active community survey, which is by FM3, and our open town hall survey to inform the discussion. Under city accomplishments, we will be sharing the most significant accomplishments from this year's fiscal, this year's, or this fiscal year, organized by community service areas, referred to that as the CSA, that has been made up of various departments within the city. In doing so, I want to thank the city council for your continued leadership and support in advancing city services, second to none. I would also like to acknowledge and thank our city attorney, Chris Tis, and the BBK team, who have been our partners in advancing city policies, implementing laws, and providing sound legal advice. All of our accomplishments, we are sharing this evening, are made possible through the council's support and the city attorney's guidance. Together, we do work as a team. With all of our accomplishments to date, we still face significant evolving challenges. Our work in city governance and operations never ends. By CSA, we will present major work plan items and discuss operational constraints based by each department in the city. As your city manager, I believe it's important to share our major work efforts underway, but also point out our constraints, the challenges we must overcome day in and day out in order to properly respond and be successful to you, the city council, and in service to the Nopitas community. Upon completion of the CSA presentation, we will move back to the council priority areas, opening up the discussion for council to affirm or modify these areas. We will include more recently identified council items, such as reinforcement cameras, feasibility study of performing arts center for those in the back, a citywide vaping ban, and we will be requesting council input to advance any of these items for further analysis through the process. Our presentation will conclude with review and discussion of fiscal policies, where we will seek further feedback. I'm looking forward to a robust council staff discussion, and I'll now turn it over to Director Walter Rossman.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. What I would like to do in the next forty minutes or so, bring you back to the state orders, fiscal analysis of cities. This happened November two thousand nineteen, state order, release information, use for capital or comprehensive audit statements, financial reports. I'll look back about ten years, and let me look forward to while I look back what happened. I want to indulge you in a few slides there. And then bring you general fund reserves, the picture you seen in December when we closed the last fiscal year, and then actually go into the forecast. So if you look at the state order, they look at local entities, about four hundred and seventy-one California cities, and they're trying to figure out, give them comprehensive annual financial statement reports, how, what's the sustainability to pay its bills, both the short and long term? This means the cash position, liquidity, the debt burden, financial reserves, revenue trends, and to play employees' retirement benefits. What's key there is they looked only at data from fiscal two thousand seventeen, the council set certain actions thereafter, which we'll talk about as we bring up these slides. So overall, the city is doing really well. We're in green, according to state order. We have a good fiscal outlook. When it comes to revenue trends, we're looking more at the medium risk, that's a moderate risk, that's the yellow sign here. But one thing this council has done, since this report, the data for this report was generated, you approved the tax measure, well, they both approved the tax measure for T O T, and subsequently, you set the tax rate for that. That's not included in this analysis. One thing which is of current concern statewide is pension costs. We are scheduled to come back to you on March third with the actual analysis of our pension cost, looking in thirty years, on those data points which we'll provide are actually included in this, in this ten-year outlook here. There's a plan to pay it off, as long as we pay our annual determined, actual determined contributions, and are on track. And the council has set aside over thirty-four million dollars in the California's pension reserve, which we can assist when we need it to pay off some of that debt. Looking back, I'm just gonna look at general funds, not all funds, I'm gonna look at budget positions, average cost was more than non-warden employees, pension costs, and major tax revenues. So as you can see here, in the general fund, in all funds expenditures here, orange is the all funds, the red line, the heart is general fund. And it clearly shows from two thousand nine or so onwards, two thousand and ten, our expenditures have gone up. The little dip you see there between two thousand, sorry, the pointer, right here, two thousand thirteen, those are the RDA expenditures that went away, so we had to dissolve the RDA. But the city shows a big prime force for our city. Looking at budget positions, we obviously have to reduce positions initially a little bit here during the Great Recession which happened, but again, the RDA, the impact which we see right here, where we are back at four hundred and thirty-one positions, which is higher than we were about ten years ago.
Well, if I could pause it for a second. I certainly had an urge to ask a question about one of the slides, but I want to take a time to kindly ask my colleagues to reserve all questions until the end, so that we can, can do all the slides at a positive rate.
I appreciate the name. Non-warden employees, as its picture shows, a non, as one employee, and the average cost is more than a non-warden, just to take away, the cost has been rising over the last ten years. Look like a pension cost, that's a typical picture which we see. One thing you will see with the external analysis which we did, you'll see on March third, in the long run, the pension costs will decrease, as it stands today. I think that's important to note for here, today, for the next ten, fifteen years, we will face rising pension costs. Our revenue picture here, we were able to balance our budgets for the last ten years because our revenues also have been rising, partially through the recovery of the economy, and partially by higher tax increases with the bonus grant. So I would then with reserves. Keith, whoops, sorry for that. He had the eighty-four million dollars. Here the eighty-four million dollars, that's the unassigned limited reserves that are available to spend. And you see the various reserves I just talked about, personalization reserve of thirty-four million dollars. And really, the reserves up here, which we touched at times through council budget actions, it's the total, it's the unassigned reserve of ten million dollars. If we need a defund start this year, that's where we go first, and then we'll touch the personalization reserve at last, the competition reserve, or the special reserves, you know, such technology, facility replacement reserve, unofficial, like official reserve, et cetera. One thing which is important takeaway here, our total reserves are very well, we are very well positioned with reserves. The council has stayed the last few years and set aside money, thus various reserves at fiscal year end, and that puts us in a very fiscally positive position, especially in terms of additions which we have to do, fire station two replacement, which we'll come forward to you in April of this year. So what's the forecast like? So what we did is, we looked at all the numbers, we built the personnel costs, we built the non-personnel costs. We worked with departments of revenues, we have consultants which help us with the revenue analysis. And with that, we see the forecast right here. As a result, where we stand right now, this is a preliminary forecast, it's key to say, we expect to be one point three million dollars in the positive for the next fiscal year. But the following fiscal year, you see right away a slight deficit of about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. What that means is, we have the fiscal proved this year, so we have enough funds for next year we can actually afford, we can resolve this deficit. One thing I want to show is net operating results and net operating margins. These are two different concepts which may be due to you. Net operating results, which you used before, that's your annual surplus of deficits. And net operating margin is the change from one fiscal year to the next as it comes to the operating results, which are surpluses and deficits. So for instance, I mean, I pointed to the last two columns here, sorry, Jane.
That's all right.
Again, let's... We have a slight deficit here, ninety-two thousand dollars. If we resolve this deficit with ongoing solutions, it means either new revenue, which is ongoing, or expenditure reductions, then the shortfall of the following year really goes down by this hundred thousand dollars. You see that one point eight million dollar here drops down to one point seven million dollars. Expect you to care. So those, if you see it more on the next slide, whoops, it's a surplus. I should have come out of the motion here. Okay, you see the short fall there. Looking at the next fiscal, the last ten years out, what you see there is the deficits on an annual basis are increasing, but year-over-year deficit is actually not so bad. They offer a little million dollars that between three hundred and eighty-seven thousand and five, five million dollars. So again, the key thing is, we have to be fiscal proved, looking out always long-term, what the impact of long-term ongoing costs may have, whether it's personnel costs with contractual obligations, whatever it may be. But this is what we use in finance when we bring in the budget. We just don't look at one year, we look at the second year, the third year, at long-term. So one thing which is clear in the forecast, and this is a conservative revenue forecast, I have to say that too, I don't, I looked at long-term increases in property tax, in sales tax, which is the comprehensive annual growth rate we use. We've worked with our consultants, and they provide us numbers as well. And then it becomes down to judgment as well, what makes sense given the environment which we see today. Expenditures are up, pacing revenues in the out years, not too bad, something to watch for as we build the budget over the next few years. Annually, this forecast is updated as part of the budget process and new information as we gather from departments, as we look at the economy, as hotels build and broaden line, that will be incorporated into the forecast. So here, coming back to this two concepts, net operating results, so if we don't resolve with ongoing solutions our deficits, obviously they're growing over the years. That's the blue line. If we are resolving it, this yellow line, and that really that means that this deficit is up between less than two million dollars. It's like surplus. For the ten years, the demand for the general fund is about hundred twenty million dollars. It's about one to two percent deficit. Not too bad. However, let's say we have a list of what's not included, that's important for you to know this well. What parts, what's the forecast not including costs? Well, first of all, we do have, as you know, an aging infrastructure. Boy, does it decide potentially adding infrastructure and new services to our community, such as performing arts center, public safety building was built in the eighties. It certainly needs to be retrofitted from a seismic perspective with an outdated storm drain system, on aging storm drain system, and we're just undergoing a parts master plan. So if those infrastructure improvements which you did are not included in the forecast. If infrastructure projects come online, we better there, we'll start working on that. The operational impacts are not included yet either. Sometimes if you add Fire Station number, which we rebuilt, Fire Station number two, it's a larger building, then they have high operation costs. Those incremental costs are not yet included. They're not too bad, but it's important to know to the council and the public. The maybe operational impacts which we talked about related to the fire station and the field transit center, these are not included as well. The forecast assumes specifically for our city a three percent increase, close to CPI. CPI is around three and a half percent right now in the area for salary increases and related benefits increases. If we grant increases beyond three percent, then obviously those incremental increases are not included in the forecast. Pensioned healthcare cost increases, as assumed by our actuaries for the next ten years, and they're conservative assumptions. They are included, however, CalPERS may change some assumptions, it makes some assumptions changes. CalPERS may drop the interest earnings rate, which is kind of seven percent, further down and more rapidly than we think. So there may be impacts which we have not included in the forecast. If we have a recession, it's our revenues. About two years later, we get impact from CalPERS. So that, those impacts are not included as well. And that's the last point really here, changes in the local, state, and national economy, which happened. We are now in a very strong business cycle for the last ten years or so. Eventually, business cycles have a recession, and that's not included in the recession in the base forecast. What I have done though is, I have, the state is looking at the recession scenario right now, the governor, the next eight to twenty-four months. I built one in for twenty-four months. I took down revenues, major revenue categories such as property, sales tax, transit, occupancy tax, to a medium, mild to medium recession. So if it happens this, when you see the impact right there, it's you immediately have deficits in twenty-one, twenty-two, higher ones in twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll go a little bit into a slide in the graphic display and will help you more than this standard. So you have that, oops, it's still a surplus, but I'll say deficit in those years. If you look here, recession scenario means that we have definitely a much larger gap between revenues and expenditures. And as the recession hits, you would have to immediately address that scenario. So how would we do this? Potential solutions for teaching use of reserves. We just want to be prudent with that as well. We don't want to spend all your reserves right away. Potential expenditure reduction, potential revenue generation. Those are really the three methods we can employ in order to address a recession if it becomes that scenario. That concludes the forecast. So if you have any questions, let's move on to the next one.
I want to ask about... I'm not looking for a, well, I'm kindly asking for a quick answer. I don't want to take too much time away from anybody this evening, but under the slide for major general, we're at for fund revenues. I know our sales tax was down kind of year-over-year last fiscal year. I don't see that. I don't see, I don't see that demonstrated on the graph. Please, and please correct me.
Well, it started eighteen nineteen. I hope it changed to eighteen nineteen when I was twenty.
Yeah, I believe our sales tax was down about a million dollars.
Can you look it up?
Was it? Yeah. I think it was from eighteen to nineteen.
To nineteen twenty, to the current speed?
It was eighteen to nineteen.
Okay. Oh, okay, so, so what happened in the next year with extra payment? Yeah, that's correct. So, sales tax is typically, until the last fiscal year, the state board of equalization, which has a new name now, would pay out sales tax on a quarterly basis. And they would do this within the next three months. From an accounting perspective, what happens is, well, the first two months after fiscal year ends, we stop accruing, recognize the sales tax from the last fiscal year. We always missed one month, sort of, was lagging. And we went to new fiscal year, but now with the state board of equalization, changes methodology, and they took this extra month, which was, was cool, the next fiscal year, and brought it forward. So eighteen nineteen has an anomaly, has thirty months of sales tax versus just one month. In the program forward, we have twelve months again, but they moved their own accrual methodology from, shortened it from three months down to two months. Paid us quicker than another way of putting it.
Thank you. I'll stop saying our sales tax.
So basically, the sales tax probably went down, but it does show in the graph, there's a thirteen, a thirteenth month of payment.
Thank you, thank you very much. And under the preliminary forecast slide for fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-five, can I request that, I know, we're, you know, we're looking at, looking forward five years, but can we look backwards one year just so we can have some context?
Sure.
Not to, at next meeting. Yeah, I'd like to just look back one year to have some sort of...
We can bring you the comparison from the amended budget, nineteen twenty, and see how it changed into the forecast. First of all.
Fantastic.
Walter? Yes, can we go back to the slide with all the revenue sources?
Sure.
Now, how are, how's the revenue from our cannabis tax doing?
Well, we don't have it.
That's, that's a shame. We could get a lot of revenue. Okay. We should carry on to...
Sure.
That was a real question. Yes.
I have a question. Could we go to the slide where it says general fund reserves? I think it's just, it talks about the unassigned reserves.
Uh-huh.
I'm just trying to understand a little bit more of the contingency reserve. Is that where TOT money goes into?
No, what happens is, we don't dedicate the TOT revenue source to any kind of reserve. But what we do is, at the end of the fiscal year, whatever is left, whatever additional revenue we generated off the budget, or most of its expenditure savings. Most part of money gets divided, divided up by those reserves. For instance, personalization reserve, if the surplus gets twenty percent, facility replacement fund gets twenty percent, and I think others in more, people want some of that money.
No, I would thank you very much.
Okay, sure. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I sort of go just through the listings of Magnolia, the very, and tell me if this wasn't part of yours, the study session objectives.
Uh-huh.
That slide. I'm just going to go through the slide book quick.
Sure.
Where it says community engagement plan. In the past, I'm not sure we have used the commissions in this process. One number one, but I would like to make sure that we do with this process. We've gone out to the community in meetings. But now that I have actually set on more commissions, I think we have community members that would really like to be involved in that part of the process. And behind us today, there are persons representing the theater program, but there's many groups that get together and meet in class about different aspects. And we should make sure we ask them specifically about those things that they want to have a voice in because they're, in particular, they may not come to a community engagement meeting, or if they come, they may be drowned out, and they're going to know what's going on. So I just wanted to make sure as part of the community engagement plan that we have two avenues already established, and they can be included. I would like to see that we do that.
We still have the sort of presentation of the actual plan to that.
Okay. Like I said, I'm just going to go through this as quick as I can. The... I was, the map that you had that showed the green, yellow, and the red. So I was with you until the red. And only because one of the things I was told when I was first elected is that we were one of the few cities in this county that had a plan to deal with the curse deficit or some way to start collecting dollars, we were putting set-asides and such. And we were doing that every year. Had done that before I came, we're doing that continually when I was here. So red to me, as you sort of spelled it out, said that we never caught up. I want to make sure I'm interpreting that correctly. We didn't close the gap like we thought we were going to, or the dollar amount just kept increasing larger or faster than we thought it was going to. I would have expected maybe yellow, but not red, so could you explain why that is, that looks the way it does?
Sure. So obviously, sustain all of this analysis. I've heard the website is saying the reasons why they did qualifying or categorize cities as red, because we all have a high pension payments to, our pension payments to grow over the next ten, fifteen years, was state order not taken into consideration, is the recent contributions from the last two, three years the council made towards our pension reserve. Because those funds are now thirty-four million in fiscal nineteen, their date is from fiscal two thousand seventeen, two years on the past. I think state order, again, looking at the website, just recognizing that it's ongoing and increasing cost for cities, and that's why the economy is...
So more, so other cities are having to throw away more dollars in the future than we will have to because we've had it continually for a longer period in the past. Is that a way?
Cities have no reserve set aside at all.
That's correct.
And so, so what does this reserve do? I think that's what they're asking to us. Our unfunded actuarial liability is two hundred and seven million dollars as of last, at the end of last fiscal year, and we set aside thirty-four million dollars. So it's fifteen percent. The first rates which CalPERS calculates, what's the number actuaries does, include a contribution on every year to pay off that liability. So within thirty years, we'll have paid it off actually. And that's what you're going to see in the presentation on March third, which we referred to last year.
And I'm thankful for that. I also thought we were putting dollars away in prior years and adding to it. Is that...
Say that again, sorry.
So it's not just the thirty-four million, but in prior years, we were putting dollars away towards that. So the pot is much larger. That's wrong, I distinctly know that. If I interpreted that last week.
Let me see. So we put money into the... OPEB, we're, we're not putting any extra, we're just putting the actuarial determined contribution. So we don't have a pot of money for the retirement, just for the pension.
So I think what the council was saying in the past with it is make extra payments, so it's CalPERS, what's it more set money aside?
No, we didn't. We just set the money aside, waiting to have that plan that we'll be presenting to you.
Thank you for that presentation. I misunderstood. That general reserve, fund reserves, that's my last question. The top part where it says unassigned reserves. So were those done at the start of the year? I think they were still there at the end. I mean, I'm trying to make sure, reserves normally are assigned at the start. So we, the unassigned, we were hoping that we still have that eleven million at the end.
So this is the reserve, the council, you recommend to the council, or the council utilizes to address any media expenditures which we haven't thought about. So you see the media actually coming forward into two thousand, February eighteen. A part of the recommendation will, will recommend you use some of the other funds. The hope, obviously, from my perspective, is that we always increase reserves to some level, but we need to balance it out with the needs of the organization, provide services to our residents. So you're correct, the hope is to keep the eleven million dollars, but it will probably dip a little bit during the fiscal year, we have other expenditure savings or additional revenue, and then we bring it up again.
And then at the next one, the facilities replacement fund is separate and distinct from the CIP.
That is correct.
So these are projects that we wouldn't have planned for, but are more immediate nature that just came in products. Is that...
So the CIP is annually, which we are offering to the council, and we then identify funding sources for the next fiscal year. The facilities replacement fund is fighting the... The facilities replacement fund is finding facilities which we currently have with city hall, fire station, public works, P D building, where we try to save the money for replacement in the future. The challenge is, I mean, I know P D is about a hundred million dollars replacing the building, seven million dollars is a good start, but it doesn't get us where it's at, but I think it's the right thing to do, so that we have at least some money set aside for future replacement of our infrastructure.
For smaller things, I'm just trying to find, figure out, make sure I understand that these, that seven million, there's a reason it's not in the C I P, it's because it's something we can take care of in one year, or it's below a certain level, or something of some sort like that.
Yeah, I have the same inquiry. Wouldn't it not make more sense to be under capital?
So in general, how we budget this, we, we budget our dollars in the operating fund reserves, and when we need the dollars in the C I P, we transfer it annually, always with the C I P. So the council policy is, the city will maintain a capital reserve for facilities replacement with target of ten million dollars, while the set for previous council, this council, and shall be used for rehabilitation, replacement of city facilities, and the other topic. So pretty much, it is set aside for long-term infrastructure replacements, and it's targeted for million dollars.
So, so not today, but when we come back to this, I'd like to talk about that one specifically. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and you know, the way I, how follow up, going to ask the question, the facilities replacement fund is very much the way I, as I see it, is fluid, on, just in the event or in anticipation of any work that needs to be done, it's hard to square it into the C I P when it's laid out five years, going forward, so. Is that, is that the best practice among the financial management?
Yeah, just to keep it in our, right, you're fine.
Okay. Thank you. Nope, nope, everyone down.
So do you, on the general fund reserves, do you feel that our reserves are lofty enough to withstand another recession, to carry us over with the, with the next recession?
It depends how deep the recession is, if it's a mild one, I think we're on the right track, if you have a more medium recession, so mild one, like, think about nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-one, with the Gulf War, that was a mild recession at the time, we got out of it within six months, had certain impact on the environment, excellent economy. If you look at the dot, dot com bust recession, that was the deeper for us, the impact is directly, because we suddenly had less people moving out of the area, less hotel, rent tax revenue, property tax revenue went down partially, but it wasn't very advanced, that would be tough to manage.
I don't read any of this.
Can you learn the history slide?
And then the worst one was two thousand.
Thank you, thanks for the comment.
The worst one was two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah, in two thousand, it really was, the deepest recession period is probably in the eighteen seventies, eighteen eighties. It was not as deep as the Great Depression, obviously, but it was severe for the century.
The Great Recession. So, and then also, we have a contingency reserve, so is that the one that for, I'm confused, contingency, contingency reserve and non-spendable and assigned reserves?
Okay, so non-spendable and assigned reserves, it's really an accounting classification which you provide by Gatsby, but it comes in an accounting stimulus board, and non-spendable encumbrances, so you're basically issued a contract, encumber the funds for the contract, and you're committing yourself to pay for this contract. You can almost cancel a contract in terms of early, but that's in a non-spendable, for that example. Contingency reserve means, this is a hierarchy, which if you have to spend reserves, we would spend that. First, we go to unassigned, then the next one would be the budget stabilization fund, so that's when we have suddenly a crash in the budget fiscal year, property tax revenue crashes, or revenue, then we go to budget stabilization fund. The last thing is contingency reserve we would touch, because that's really when there's a, we have an earthquake, we have to pay payroll, and we just have to float the city operation, because we don't get the tax revenue, because everything is, has to be rebuilt in our area. That's where I probably would touch the contingency reserve on the council action.
Thanks for the clarification, and then the other question on potential impact design review. I know we hired a firm to do an analysis on our energy facilities and to do all, to find out if we are energy efficient, so is that included in this or not?
I found out.
Not yet.
But then we make the note.
So it's gonna make it a more of a cost.
Well, there will be savings potentially, there will be savings.
Okay, yeah, in the long run, there will be savings, but initially, the cost, capital cost.
Council member, we plan to come with an update to council at the next meeting, and then come back with my collection.
Thank you.
For the board, okay.
That's it. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, so the next part, I'd like to discuss with you, is the budget calendar, budget development. First of all, we are right at the beginning here, January twenty twenty, but we actually have started our budget process in November already. We kicked it off with, it's over the council, with the budget system, which we have implemented in the meantime, rapidly within eight weeks, with Open Gov, and that was a record pretty much for them as well. Very dedicated staff, internal finance, which I want to thank Jane for, and David, and Victoria, and Joyce, as well as working with departments, have been very gracious of working with a new system and learning a new system. So January twenty twenty, we established, we're working on to establish a base budget, and then a proposed budget, and we'd like to explain this in a second to you, but let's go to the calendar first. Right now, we have statistically valid community survey, and some initial results were needed today, but that's the community right now, and we also started a police survey, because I think it supports to hit our three main constituents of our budget development. That's the community, that's your council members, you have our employees. We also started running an open town hall budget survey, very similar to last year, we looked at the council priority areas, which you established last year, we're testing them through open town hall survey. We're here at ten point eight today, we're planning to, for community engagement meetings at this time, but we obviously have a discussion with you today, what do you feel would be most appropriate for an occasional process for the community. We have several study sessions, cap improvement on March twenty-fourth, April fourteenth, the master fee schedule, and May three, the master fee schedule adoption, and the operating budget study session May twelve. Our plan is to release the May, for both budgets on May four, so about a good week before we have the study session. We can do it sooner, we'll do it soon. And then typically, what we have, a state law, a public hearing, adoption of the budget. So one thing which we're doing definitely here this year, you'll see this reflected in the budget document, we first establish a base budget, and then we actually talk about the incremental changes to the proposed budget. So what's a base budget? Nineteen twenty, with the council adopted budget, you said, the dollars you have from all funds, that's a service level we shall provide to the community. So you provided, through your policy document, you funded the services to the community. A base budget is taking that service level and rolling it over to the new costs, so what do I have? We have M O U increases for our staff, pension cost increases, house and car payment cost increases, and we're building this from ground up, in our personnel costs. Non-personnel costs, we're looking at expenditures, we work with all department heads, that's what we're doing right now, it's a bit the request for contractual services increases, maybe a bit more training, supplies, et cetera. We look at expenditure history, how have they done in the past, and is, can, if any pieces are requested, can they absorb it in the budget, versus give them this dollar? Another revenue side, which I think this is a few layout here, we also clearly say how much do our revenues go up, we analyze them, as I mentioned before, and from department-related revenues, such as development activities, fee revenue, we're working with department directors to say, what do you see in your budget, how do you suggest we increase or decrease revenues, what decrease your revenues, which government, which you, which they manage. Proposed budget is now, that's change to service level. It could be an increase, it could be also a decrease, given that we have a surplus of about one point three million dollars, we obviously will propose, given the council direction and input today, and from the community, through this budget process, change and increase the service level. This is what most position changes show, equipment management, et cetera. You'll see those changes reflecting the budget document, which is the next slide, which we'll be basing proposals, we'll speak to in a second. Let me go quick, flip over to the budget system implementation, so a huge amount of workload which we're doing, we are obviously developing the operating budget, they are depending forecast, partially done in the, by the system, then we pull it out into Excel, next we will fully into the system, we'll publish the operating budget documents through the system, there's a margin for that, versus in the past, you would just sell spreads, word file, you'll send those, and you publish your documents. We can do labor cost modeling, so if the council is in labor negotiation, or the city is, and we want to, like, know the impact of the labor cost increases, et cetera, we'll see this right away, we have performance measures in the system, we will integrate with the city's financial management system, and also report it. One thing which we plan to do in twenty twenty-one, maybe we'll get it done beforehand, is a transparency tool, typically what Open Gov does, and some cities have some barriers, council, this is nodding, they take the budget, they put it on the web, you can drill down all the way to every expenditure level, full transparency, our residents can look at that, you can play around with the tool, and that's what we hope to do, hopefully by the proposed budget, but not go to guarantee that, okay? We're working on that.
Is that like the Domino's pizza tracker?
Not sure what that is.
That's a good thing you know.
Storyboard is like a location tool, how can you tell a story about a budget, a story about our core financial reports? So we'll start working this next fiscal year, and then Steve will then, what you've done with the operating budget in the system, he will take it over and do capital budget development in the same Open Gov tool, so he's still in his old system, our way of budgeting, and he's gonna go to. So budget document has to change too, we're going to publish it differently, and obviously that's a good time to re-design the budget document, and there will be clear delineation of this budget adjustment, as we can see, so if we increase contractual services, we'll note it, we'll note that, if the council has approved additional expenditure this fiscal year, and they have an ongoing impact, we'll note that in a line item. A budget proposal, which is really the major change, you do outline the changes from one fiscal to the next, we'll, we'll, to describe this in a paragraph format for you, to the public, so what does it do, what are we asking for, what's the impact, why is it needed, what's the outcome, and how does it tie into performance measures? Key thing is alignment of the budget proposals, two priority areas, which the council will set for us, hopefully today, affirm either the seven you have today, or modify them, as you see fit. We're going to have initial tables, information, so you see more data, obviously, the best data you'll see online with the transparency tool, we also have some more budget document, budget reconciliation here over here, so see what happened, last this budget in public department was X million dollars, now it's a different amount, how can we change from one year to the next? So it's a high-level reconciliation process, and obviously, you have the budget performance measures, and that's the difference, different colors, similar to what the budget in British looks like, you've seen that, it's a very similar design format. And that concludes that section, before we go to the next one. So any questions on budget calendar? We do have a separate section on budget engagement.
Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for adding that transparency to us, we're really excited to see what happens.
Well, I tried not to, I tried not to, I know, I was trying not to, but, and so maybe two quick questions. On the very first budget development slide, you talked about service levels, and then what you included in were really personnel costs, as opposed to service levels. So is there at some point, and you did talk about it later on, is that, so if, is it really about the cost of staff and such that we're gonna see as opposed to, we used to go and, if we were contracting out the parks, we used to go do the parks once every five weeks, and now we're gonna have to do them every seven weeks, because of the change in the dollars. To me, that's the service that we're providing as opposed to the cost. And so, the two words didn't quite match for me, I'm just trying to figure out, are you, at some point, are we gonna actually understand the services that won't be done, not so much just the costs that went up?
Okay, so let's take the example of parks, so we told you to take these crews, whether it's contract staff or in-house staff, and emote the parks every two weeks, that service level will stay the same, we're not going to touch that, but we adjusted the cost for it, where contractual dollars may go up, or maybe the staff costs is going, or you need some new equipment, which costs more today and lower, from ten years ago, costs less than it will cost tomorrow, although we're saving up in the equipment fund to replace it more. So that's the service level change, is the base budget is not touched, you're just looking, how much does it cost us next year to pay for the same service?
So we will get, this year, we were getting it every two weeks, next year, we'll still get it every two weeks. It may cost us a little more, we'll find that out, but the service level will stay the same.
That's correct.
Good, okay, that's good. Then the, throughout the year, we are asked to add big additions to the budget, versus even have positions added, or something else added. Are we gonna see what those were, is there a way to reflect that in this process? So that when you, instead of showing just, here's, here's what you had, that gives the appearance that we saw that at the outset of the, of the budget process, when actually it may have been two, three months, four, five, six months into the process?
Sure. So the budget reconciliation page on each department section will show, if the council approved the addition of a position, it would say, let's do building inspector, as an example, one point zero building inspector, council approval, one hundred and eighty, those don't read that, so you know exactly what's gonna happen. I won't show the detail, what you, what the action was at the time, but it will reflect if we change the council made to the budget, from one fiscal year into the next.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, anybody else here? All right, Walter, carry on, thank you.
So now, turn it over to Ashmead.
Thank you, Walter. So Walter mentioned about the seven priority areas, and we, as we are looking at the budget and developing the budget, that's all aligned with the council priority areas that this council talked about last year in February, and so we have seven, public safety, environment, transportation and transit, economic development and job growth, neighborhoods and housing, community wellness and open space, and governance and administration. So we'll come back to this, just wanted to kind of set this at the foundation as we go into the rest of the presentation, we'll revisit this, and we would like to kind of hear from council, they are pretty comprehensive, and really cover the services we provide, but if the council wanted to make any tweaks based on what they've been doing from the community, we would like to get that feedback, because that'll help inform the budget development. So we'll move into community engagement at this point, and we'll also raise some of some of the things we're planning to do. Vice Mayor, we've made a note about what you said about commissions, so we'll incorporate that in, because that won't show up here, so thank you for that. So in terms of surveys, again, we're doing, we did all of these last year, but I just wanted to talk a little bit, and I'll go into more detail about the types of surveys. The open town hall survey is a pretty simple survey, it's done online, and it really basically asks people to, you know, take a million dollars, imagine a million dollars, and how would you invest over the seven council priority areas? And that's open to actually residents, people who work in Lopez, or people who are just interested to provide that. Then we have a statistically valid community survey, that is underway right now, and that's being done by F M three, I'll talk about that a little bit, and we have some preliminary findings to share with you today. And then the employment survey, we are getting ready to launch, and this is also being done by the party for, and the employment survey helps us to look at kind of organizationally to what should we be investing. we be investing. And so then Walter talked about the community budget meetings, we'll go over sort of locations we are proposing, but would love to get feedback from council as to whether we should locate different forums or locations. We have multiple budget study sessions and public hearings. And the public hearings actually will be for not just the adoption of the budget, but also the schedule and the CIP. So we'll have multiple opportunities for the community to engage. And I just wanted to take a minute here and acknowledge Raza, our management fellow, now that Jennifer's gone, Raza stepped in and helping with a lot of the community engagement efforts.
What's up?
We, last year we also had a dedicated website, we're planning to do the same, so people can go get information, get access to surveys, we'll make sure to have frequent updates through social media channels, so prior to community meetings, or just reminding people to take the survey, the Open Town Hall survey. And then, you know, as we're doing for other meetings today, for example, we are doing live YouTube and Facebook Live, so we will continue to have that for the budget meetings as well. So these were the three locations we were proposing. Obviously, the study sessions and the public hearings kind of happen in the council chambers and, you know, in the city hall complex. But we have, we are proposing these three, and we can certainly incorporate the commission meetings and, you know, get feedback from the commissioners, but would love to hear from council if there's, you know, other places we would suggest or other forums.
Could now be the time for that, I'll wait.
Why don't we wait till we finish up this session, and we'll come back to it? So as I mentioned, this is the community survey, so this is a statistically valid survey, where they do both online as well as telephone surveys, randomly selected, they're required to make sure they have a balance of different types of populations, so they're working really hard to do that, so it's not just English-speaking. Surveys are being done in multiple languages, four languages. Last year we had a margin of sampling of 3.5%, so pretty good results, and currently, again, they're underway, we have about over 300 online surveys right now, but the telephone ones will go through this week, as will the rest of the online. And these are really preliminary, so I just want to put a big caveat, these are really preliminary results, we'll be coming back with detailed results on March 3rd, something with the last just left here. But this is kind of what it's looking like, we have overall satisfactions at about 70% quality of life. What was interesting was the top three priorities, it's showing up that there's a lot of interest in maintaining infrastructure in good condition for streets, parks, and utilities, so that was kind of nice to see that coming from the community. Public safety and the environment were the top two areas. We had asked this question last year, did the same about the pace of city growth, and it's pretty similar to last, it's gone down a little bit in terms of the people thinking that the city's growing too quickly, about 37% think it's just right, and then 13% think it's too slow. With good ratings for those who had contacted the city recently, about 75% of them said they got great customer service. And so again, we'll come back with more detailed results. On the Open Town Hall survey, this was launched on the 18th of January, the survey results are of the 22nd with 62 responses, but we, to date, now we have 69. So we'll just continue to promote it, and we'll have this open until April. And so this one, so again, here, you can see it lines pretty closely in terms of the top three, so transportation and transit, and you can kind of, you know, relate that both to infrastructure as well as to actually traffic, that's the top most, and then public safety a close second, and environment is coming up.
This is the results from?
Open Town.
What's the from?
That, it's Open Town, and they're called Open Town Hall.
Okay, thank you.
So, and then what we did was we also, because there's the allocation of money, but then they could also write in comments, and so we tried to kind of compile all the comments and do, you know, move them by council priority areas. So you can see on the public safety, they sort of keep the city safe, invest, but then also watch for how much is spending, so, and then really, you know, some comments about kind of enforcement related to pedestrians. Environment, this was just, the comment was just environment, so, but then we got quite a few, the highest were in transportation and transit, and economic development and job growth. So some of these, we've obviously heard before about concerns about traffic, about BART, wiring to 37, so, but the ones related to pedestrian crosswalks and the markings of road, this is something we hear from the community, and we're kind of, you know, already have CIP projects, some of that. These were comments on economic development and job growth, big businesses, maybe potential taxes are making homes. There was a comment about revisiting allowing cannabis, and getting rid of railroads dividing the city, so, and just want to give the council a flavor of what's being here. And we'll get you a detailed report, but this is some preliminary. The neighborhoods and housing, the transportation is obviously an important priority for the community, rent control, preserving single-family neighborhoods, and then for community wellness and open space, kind of when the central senior programs, for common art, sports center, and parks and grounds, and then we captured a couple of comments that don't really fit in one of those categories, but we just wanted to mention. And so now we're actually going to go into, so we're going to go into the next section, but we'll spend some time discussing major accomplishments. Oh, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, please, thank you so much.
Yes, so we'll wait here for you, and I know there was some question.
It was me, yeah. Well, thank you very much, Ashwini, I know there's more room to present here. My quick question, we're not really a question, suggestion, for the community budget meetings, I don't have anyone passed, yours passed, and if there's any way we can team up with a small business in town to kind of incentivize attendance at these meetings with food? Last time there was, I think maybe sandwiches or something, but maybe we need a little more grease or something. And I'm not advocating for any one business, any business, I'll leave that down. And then we could kind of promote it to the community, saying, we're partying with this restaurant with this flavor, and we're providing this food, and we want folks to come on, you know.
I can sponsor popcorn.
Oh, no. And butter, yeah. The meetings have burgers.
Yeah.
All right, that's my suggestion. Does anybody else have that?
Court question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So when I, this, I thought, this was really toward, I appreciate, so just a couple of questions, one, or suggestion, what is, if we could have something over at the sports center? We have groups of parents and students who are very specific what they really want from us, that would be good to capture them somehow. And the engagement, community engagement, we say Channel 15, and every time I go, it's blank. So I'm not sure what we're doing with it, but if we're going to use it, we should put something on it. I'd like to have a meeting over in someplace in the transit area, because what they want from us is really different than others, because that's really where the density is higher, and so I think their needs are different.
I agree.
So we'll just, we have all that density, and I think, I think you're going to hear something different from them, and it's okay to have something different all around. Public safety, I always know what people mean when they talk about public safety, I'm going to the preliminary results. Environment, I struggle with that, so I, I have struggled to know where to go listen, what to do with that. Transportation and transit is the same thing, we talked about BART being, you know, like that's it, and I know there's more to it than that, so I just would like to know, I know we have the subcommittee going, but I think we need to make, I agree with those three as being top, and I like the way you group them together with those other kinds of things that sort of flow together. But I, I do think we need a more thorough conversation, because environment, environmental types of things, I'm not sure all the things that make up what go in there, and what we can do, and especially transportation, because, I know Rob comes and talks to us, but I also know that there may be, we have the electric car company that's building cars right for um, Wincarthy.
Right, so.
Right, so, I mean, are we supposed to be looking at that, or what is meant by that? What are, I'm not sure, so I just think a larger conversation, so to sort of understand what the community wants from us, so we can see if we can go with it, so, but I'm thankful that they're up there, because it isn't something that, I thought, well, BART coming, that's it, and it really truly isn't, so. So I think that was really great work there all together, I think that helped to mainly focus us. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Finn.
Yeah, I just have a quick question on the, I guess, the survey. What efforts were made to ensure that communities that speak different languages, you know, were able to communicate their thoughts?
So on the survey that FM3 is conducting, they are doing the telephone survey, so they're doing two things, they're trying to make sure that things are, you know, harder to get input from type of populations, and then they're also conducting the survey in multiple languages?
Well, I'm referring to the more anecdotal surveys, just, yeah, because, I mean, if we want to take a look at, you know, you know, all these things that people are saying instead of like quantifying it, then I believe that it's very important for different, you know, communities, better non-English speaking, for that to be reflected.
What we can do is we can, we'll go through the Open Town Hall and see.
The last time that they presented to us, all they really did was like translate everything, it was more so a, an automated function, like Google Translate, and, you know, a lot of things can get lost in translation, so I don't know if that, you know, we need to, yeah, revisit in terms of our vendor, or adding, you know, additional, finding an additional vendor, whatever makes the most sense, but I don't want, you know, that aspect of the community to be lost there.
So publish in Spanish, Open Town Hall, however, we have translator, we actually translate the survey, so we can see what languages we can actually look at in the tool. As if it's Chinese characters, I'm not sure if that's sophisticated.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Yeah, if we can make sure that that's reflected in the next time.
And we have this one for the next two months, so we can find, yeah, get it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Domenech, where are you?
Absolutely, so I have a question. In terms of community engagement, when I think, what is the challenges that folks are experiencing to get to our community meetings? I definitely think food is great, because it's an incentive, right? But I also believe childcare is a huge hurdle, especially for the working class, especially if we're already doing things at the schools, I would look into maybe partnering with our local YMCA to see if there's a way we could form a partnership where we provide childcare for families while they're participating in Open Town Hall. I think that would definitely hopefully bring new faces, and community members would feel supported as we move into this transparency phase of our fiscal budget. In terms, I do want to just thank you for all of your work, I know this has been a challenge, I know it's hard when you get feedback, and then you're trying to assess it and quantify it for us, so all of you, I do want to express my thoughtfulness, thanks to you for your time, and thank you so much for the presentation, I think it was, it's definitely given detail that helps us move as we forecast our entire budget, and we look at our priorities to see what we're at, so thank you very much.
Just a quick question, we don't track research names or?
Correct, in Open Town Hall, people have the option to just provide information, or it can be anonymous.
Well, I do just, looking forward to Census 2020 efforts, I don't know if it makes sense, or if it's possible for us to combine some of the functions, the outreach functions in terms of our census data collection needs, and somehow tying it all together, if it makes sense for us to work that into the vendor there. Is that something that we do have to prioritize at some point anyways? I think that we are receiving some wanting to do that. Thank you very much, Councilmember Finn. I'll look back to you, Ashwini.
Thank you. So we're going into the next part of the presentation, where we probably get to share and celebrate some of the accomplishments, talk about significant work plan items that are underway of plan, as well as certain operational constraints. And so department heads will be presenting this information by CSA, and I also wanted to kind of acknowledge, as Steve mentioned, that these accomplishments are a testament to council's leadership and support, the hard work of our staff, Chris and his staff. So I will hand it over, and these are the, just a reminder, these are the different areas, and this was something that, especially new to the city, it was established maybe a year and a little bit ago, and really, each CSA includes multiple departments, and it's organized around services which are provided to the community. So the objective is that departments are working closely and collaborating to be able to deliver exceptional services to the community, and they basically align with the seven council priorities. And so two of the CSAs, just to manage the volume of, two of the CSAs are led by, you know, interim chairman of Steve Cass, and then two are led by, and now I'll turn it over to Chief Corpus.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Amono Corpus, again serving as sheriff and police chief. So tonight I'll share on this slide with you some of the accomplishments from the police department over this past year. So you'll see that our response times to our priority calls, the highest priority calls, emergency medical calls, was at 2 minutes and 38 seconds per calendar year 2019. To offer some context here, in 2011, 2012, is our response times right around 2 minutes and 34 seconds. We incrementally saw that continue to increase up until about 2017, where it peaked at 2 minutes and 57 seconds. We've made some operational adjustments, coupled with increasing our staff, filling vacant positions, we've been able to decrease those calls to that down to 2 minutes and 38 seconds, but we pay attention closely to that to make sure we're providing the right service to the community. We reduced crime in the area of commercial burglaries and automobile theft, there is some other reductions, but these are two significant reductions. I don't want to leave you with the wrong picture. Overall, crime in Opetis, the Part 1 content we track, were up about 13.5% in calendar year 2019. However, the largest increase was in respect to auto burglaries, where we saw about a 39% increase. So we are working hard to be responsive to crime trends in the city. We implemented a light version of what's known as Rapid SOS software, that software helps to locate, pinpoint 911 callers when a call within the city will peters, and that call goes into our comm center. And so I want to highlight this, is this And so I want to highlight this, is this was not a requirement from the state. This is something that we were proactive in as an organization to enhance our responses and services to the community to make sure that whether it's a medical call or in progress crime, that we were responsive and could respond with the appropriate level of resources in locating that caller. We participated in over 100 community outreach events with 7,500 attendees. Some examples of these events would be national night out, coffee with a cop, cone with a cop, many interactions at the schools and so forth. So 7,500 represents a number of attendees at those events. We completed a police department organizational assessment and we did an audit of our evidence room. Again, nothing required by any state mandate, but we thought it important to get a third party assessment of what our operations are and how we are doing. And so I'd like to say, I will say, that the assessment and the audit came back with very positive results. There was some recommendations for some adjustments and we are in the process of making those adjustments now. We implemented the community service officer classification. So I have to begin by thanking you, the City Council, for supporting that recommendation. As you heard from our finance director, the cost of a sworn position is more than a non-torn position. So we're again looking at our operation and finding ways to reduce costs, but continue with high level of service. And the CSO position is a part of that solution. Lastly, I'll finish up with, we finished the year with 93% of our staff being trained in principal policing. Actually, I should say that led into 2019 because we just hosted two classes. Principal policing, if you're not aware, really deals with providing skill set tools when it comes to working with the community, building trust and legitimacy for police departments. And so the officers learn skill sets or at least are provided tools regarding trust, listening, implicit bias. So no different than we train our staff in tactical deployment, medical deployment. This type of service is critical for the success and building trust with the community. So our goal is to make sure we receive 100% of staff trained, but that's ongoing. And again, being proactive, we are hosting the classes to make sure we get as many people as possible in the courses in other cities who are attending here with us as well. So the next slide, we'll turn over to Fire Chief Schrader.
It's the Mayor and Council, Brian Schrader, Fire Chief. This was a big year for the Fire Department. We had the opportunity with the support of council to implement two new programs and enhancements to the services that we provide to the community. And I'm going to talk about two of those accomplishments, but they're multi-year programs. So you're also going to see some of these items show up as major action items as part of the work plan as well. So we developed and implemented the initial phase of the ambulance transport program. And this is going to be a significant service enhancement for our community. We work within a system that the EMS provider, the transport company, is contracted through by the county. And based on the geography of the city and where we are in the county, sometimes we face challenges with the service that we're provided. So now when we have critical patients and there aren't ambulances available through the county contract, we'll have the ability to transport those patients. So during this year, we took delivery of the ambulance, we procured the equipment necessary, we're outfitting that. We're working with the county, we need to be licensed by the county. So the piece of equipment needs to be completely updated, that meets all their specifications, the same requirements that they require of the county ambulance provider. We've hired the staff, again with your support, we're successful in gaining another safer grant to help offset the cost for hiring those folks. They started in the academy this month. And so as part of that process, we're actually working with one of our regional partners and delivering our academy in a different way. So we're using the South Bay Fire Academy. There's Milpiss employees as well as 19 other people from around the region that are participating in that academy. And we see that that's going to allow us to train our people and lessen the impact on our staff. And it's going to significantly reduce the cost that it takes for us to train those individuals. So we're really looking forward to that. The second, another huge multi-year project is the rebuild for Fire Station Number Two. As part of that process, we don't want to negatively impact our ability to provide service to the community. So it's important for us to find a temporary location that's in the same area as the current fire station. And you can do that in two ways. You can either find a vacant parcel and have to bring in utilities and put a building on there, which is a more costly and more time consuming process, or you can identify existing infrastructure. So we were able to find a commercial building that's right down the street from the current fire station that only requires minor tenant improvements for us to be able to move in there for a short period of time. So we've identified the tenant improvements need to be made, went through an RFP process. We've hired that contractor, they've already initiated work. And we anticipate vacating the current fire station and moving into the temporary facility this spring. And then we'll start the whole build, tear down and build process for the new fire station. We deployed the four-person tractor drawn aerial truck, better known as the tiller truck. And it's not just a new piece of equipment. And it's actually a completely different way for us to provide our service. It's a completely unique piece of equipment that has responsibilities of two drivers that they haven't had that experience before. And so each individual that needs to be certified to drive that apparatus has over 40 individual hours of drive time, as well as the educational part that allows them to operate the piece of equipment safely. As well as it's a significant enhancement in our ability to deliver service once we're there because we staff it with four people. So we're able to split into two teams when we're on an incident and get things done in a much more efficient and effective way. We finished up the successful joint fire academy with the City of Mountain View. And that was, that was a big endeavor for us. It had a significant impact on our staff. We had a very, we have a quality product. The individuals that we hired are top notch and are working out very well. Those folks were used to help staff the aerial truck as well as one of the other positions within our EMS and training division, and then also to help plan for retirements that we had anticipated. Similar to the police department, we completed our standards of cover assessment, which, you know, analyzes risk, service delivery, deployment, the resources that we have. It looks at our staffing models, at elements around our ability to deliver service. What are impediments? It analyzed our staff, where do we have shortcomings? Where do we have needs as far as on the administrative and on the operational side of the business? And, you know, we're in the process of digesting that. And we've already implemented some of the recommendations and we're going to continue to do that. And really, the most important part about the standard of cover is it's not a one-time thing. It's a living document, it's a process. It's going to drive the Fire Department to be more analytical and data-driven. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But it's really important for us to understand the changing needs of the community. And as we grow, as congestion increases, population increases, our demographic changes, all of those things have impacts on the type of incidents that we respond to, as well as how we respond and how effective we are in doing that. So we have to be able to understand those things. And this document and the information that's included in there that we're going to contain forward is going to be very important for the Fire Department.
So we'll move on to some major work plan items. Again, this slide is reflective of some of the items in the police department. You know, just as I mentioned in our accomplishments this past year, we're constantly evaluating how can we provide better service to the community. And so these are just some of the major work plan items that we are doing now to continue to be proactive in enhancing our services. So we will transition to a new public safety radio system on February 4th. The current analog system we're on, we've probably been on more than 40 or 50 years. And so a transition to this system is going to enable us to be more interoperable with not just our partners here at the county, but it's going to allow us access to be interoperable with other agencies in other counties. So again, this is an opportunity to thank you. This was more than a $3 million project. It's been several years in the making. And so we're getting ready to see the fruits of our labor and your support. When I mentioned public safety radio system, this is a radio system for fire, for police. I believe public works will have access to it as well as maybe our engineering department. The reason those are important, if we suffer a major natural disaster, let's say earthquake flood, and you have other city departments with personnel in the field, it's going to be important that we all communicate with one another and be able to communicate with other cities as well. So thank you for the support in that. We are still in the midst of replacing our police department records management system. I mentioned to you earlier in one of the council sessions, we were expecting to go out to RFP this month. That's been delayed a little bit. We just want to make sure we get it right with purchasing, but we're expecting it now to be released next month. It's critical that we replace that system for a couple of different reasons. So we're moving from Part One tracking, Part One tracking through the UCR, Uniform Time Reporting, to national incident-based reporting. It's a different system. We're actually supposed to be on that system in 2021. I don't think we will. It's very likely it's going to get kicked to another year out, not just for us, but the mandate to do so. And then we're also going to have to be reporting, you know, our staff data. We're going to have to start collecting that data in 2022 and begin reporting into the state in 2023. So we are on target as long as we get that system in place to use it as a tool to begin collecting the data instead of having to do manual entry, which would increase more staff time. We're looking for funding to replace our command vehicle. If you see that RV that's parked in front of the police department, it was purchased in 1998. That project started in 1997. It was never equipped to efficiently support staff in the field. About five years ago, we did some upgrades to try and implement some solutions for technology that is going to support our staff out in the field, and it's continuing to fail. And so a resource like that would support EOC, fire, police, and any extended deployments where we need a safe, secure environment to work where critical decisions will be made. We're still working on the transit area police substation. It's been mentioned at prior council meetings. So we have not found a location yet. We are still working with the VTA, with a potential site on their site, the fire station. However, they're not agreeable so far to a space on their site. So we're continuing to work with planning and trying to locate other potential sites. We see site potential on Piper Drive, Future Market, city owns property on Sangio唇. We're going to continue to look at the best option for our residents and the community out in the transit area.
Chief, any update on the VTA bid?
So yes and no. So we began negotiations with the VTA or the next supplemental services contract in December. There's a lot of back and forth going on now as far as better understanding some of the items that are ambiguous in the RFP to clarify that before we commit anything. We want to let them know where we stand on it. To give you an idea of why it was delayed, it's not on our part. In April, or I think it was about April of 2019, we submitted our proposal in response to the RFP. It was right around September that the VTA gave us notice that they were going to recommend a ward to the sheriff's office. That from September to December, we were being told it's going to the VTA board for a recommendation. In December, we were contacted and asked to start negotiating with them. They're not revealing what's been happening between the negotiations with the sheriff's office and them. But we're of the opinion, they are now seriously considering us for that contract. So there is no future scheduled meeting. I assume that will happen after we resolve some of the video sightings in the RFP and some clarification in our proposal. So the negotiations are still ongoing. We are going to expand our body worn camera program to service to our CSOs and detectives. This is an important piece of equipment for us. We actually, if you weren't aware of it, we began using body worn cameras right about 2010. And we changed vendors somewhere right around 2016, 2017. We have a culture within the police department, our officers want to use cameras. Not only does it collect evidence for crimes, helps capture statements, but it does protect our staff. And we use it as a tool in every evaluation of a use of force, a citizen complaint, we go back and evaluate that. And what I'm happy to report is more often than not, we find our staffs doing what's right and doing good things. You know, there are opportunities for counseling, there are opportunities for retraining, but more often we're finding them doing really good things. And so they feel good about wearing this and it's something that I highly support that we expand to other classifications. Lastly, you're well aware of the unmanned aircraft system. We're still in the process of implementing that. And we expect that we may be up and running and flying maybe in about two months.
Are we doing adequate community outreach education regarding that? Because I know that there can be safety, I'm sorry, privacy concerns. I want to make sure those concerns are addressed.
So that's a fantastic question and I appreciate it because it gives me an opportunity to tell you that we did host some community engagement meetings. It was in different areas of town, the San Diego City Hall extensions, and its school. I forget the third location, so forgive me. Almost no one attended. One of the meetings, we had someone attend and it was because he was an applicant. We had some other community members that regularly attend council meetings, show up at some of those. Because of the live attendance, we also went out with a community survey on the outdoor application. Very positive feedback and support, but there were some concerns or comments about that. So we addressed that in the policy that we implemented and that we presented to you as a council. This will be closely supervised. And I want to leave you with the confidence that this is going to be an effective tool to enhance our officer's safety and community safety. And we are going to supervise it very, very well. But the live attendance at those meetings, I actually look at that as a positive and look at that as a reflection of the trust that we have with the community that no one really thought to come out and aggressively oppose the implementation of that program.
Did I hear a question about a helicopter?
Carry on, carry on.
A drone is cheaper.
Thank you. So we'll move over to the Fire Department, major work plan items. And this first one is really, really important to me. And it really, it's a partnership between management and the labor group. And it's really putting our money where our mouth is. Our employees are a resource and us investing in them and doing everything that we can from not only a facility or a technological standpoint, but also providing them with the tools that they need, you know, to be physically, but also mentally and emotionally. And there's elements, you know, both public safety, police and fire have a very, very high divorce rate with their employees, they have a high suicide rate, there's a very high post-traumatic stress element, a lot of substance abuse issues because people are trying to find ways to cope with the things that they see. And this program, you know, we have the opportunity with the fire station to have elements that help separate the carcinogens from the employees or apparatus. You're going to see as part of the budget, a proposal that's going to add an element to the exhaust system of all of our fire engines that minimizes the carcinogens that they put off, which will help make our operations on scenes as well as in fire stations more safer for the employees. We are, for the very first time, going to have annual physicals for all of our employees. And we're going to start tracking and monitoring trends and their information and doing things that we can to help make sure that there's not only safe role at work, but all the way through their career and into retirement. We want healthy employees and we want to do everything that we can. And that, you know, the medical monitoring is a really important piece of that. We actually, I had talked about the kind of the emotional issue. We're reaching out to companies that specialize in kind of the emotional or kind of the resiliency component of individual health. And we're going to, we're going to roll out some test programs within the Fire Department. We're going to see if those resonate and then we'll fund those moving forward. So we're really covering all the bases with those employees. So I'm really excited about that. And really, an important part of that process is the employee engagement. We utilize them to buy into those programs and they're the ones that have to, you know, they're the end user. They have to use it, they have to understand the why, and then we're doing it for them. And they're the ones that also stay, you know, either through committees and research, you know, what the industry best practices are, what trends are occurring across the country, and how can we adopt those in MoPIS to have a better workforce. Strengthen relationships with the community, implementing outreach training process that contribute to enhancing confidence, trust and understanding. This is a joint, it's very important for all of public safety. Again, I talked about our changing community, our demographics changing, the challenges those folks are facing are changing. And the more that we understand what their needs are. And the more that we understand what their needs are, then we can adjust the way that we not only interact with them, but issues there might be out there within the community, and then adjust our operations and our outreach to help instill that confidence and trust for us to deliver that higher level of service to our people. And we reach out specifically, you know, schools, neighborhood associations, our faith-based community, through community events, public education events. All of those are opportunities for us to engage with the public in ways outside the 911, you know, lights and sirens portion of our business. So, we're going to continue those efforts and continue to look for ways to embed ourselves within the community. Update public safety technology and infrastructure to improve operations. I'm going to read the whole slide. This is important. Again, it's us implementing ways for us to deliver service, but care and feeding of those are just as important as the initial implementation. So, you know, our CAD system, our record management systems, our GIS capabilities, all of those need care and feeding. They need updates. They need administrators that help us utilize those to the, you know, the highest capability of those programs and keep our employees trained on them. And again, help us keep in front of the discrete best practices and really use the information and find new ways to pull the analytics out that help drive our business to make us do things the way that we should be doing, not the way that we've always done in the past. And I think that's just a really important element. I mean, especially within the fire department, we're steeped in tradition. And to be honest with you, some of them are horrible. And we're our own worst enemies, and, you know, the more that we can beat that drum and provide them with the tools to be better, then the more effective we'll be. Complete implementation of the ambulance service delivery model. This is a massive undertaking. It's not as simple as just buying an ambulance and throwing people on it. I mean, there's everything from federal, state, county, city regulations. There's fee schedules. There's Medicare licenses. There's billing component. There's a training component. There's compliance components. And all of those things are, you know, that we're working through before we can legally put that piece of equipment on the street and for us to be efficient and effective when we do that. But again, we're really, we're really looking forward to having that service delivery. And the people that are staffed on that, they're firefighters or paramedics, so they don't just work on the ambulance for the transport portion of the business. We have needs across our entire fire service delivery, structure fires, multiple incidents that occur at the same time that these folks and that unit will help us improve our level of service across the city. Analyzing and implement recommendations included in the emergency management program assessment. So, we hired an outside consultant to come in and do a comprehensive analysis of our emergency management program, everything from our facilities to our training program, our staff, how we're doing now. It's going to provide recommendations around staffing, technology, equipment, our EOC, how we train and track the competencies of our employees. So, we'll have the opportunity in the second meeting of February to have the consultant, and we'll present an executive summary for you, give you a chance to answer questions. But we know, I mean, we've seen the executive summary portion. We have gaps, but we have also made significant strides. And we have the pieces in place for us to make sure that we're going to be able to continue to serve the city if there's a major disaster or a large incident or, you know, the power safety shut-off events that we've been seeing. We actively use that resource and push information internally and externally to make sure that we're providing that service for our constituents. And then finally, the fire station construction. It's a huge undertaking. It's a multi-year project. We're working closely with internal and external stakeholders to ensure that that project stays on time, on budget, and is a quality facility. I mean, I could thank multiple departments across, you know, inside the city. We have a construction management company that is going to make the project much more smoothly and help limit the impact on our staff. But we're really looking forward to that facility coming online. As you know, the age of that facility and some of our other infrastructures, it was 51 years old, and it just, it wasn't meeting our needs anymore, and it didn't provide us with the elements of, you know, gender equality and neutrality and some of the safety enhancements that we talked about earlier, as well as implementing or incorporating elements to give back to the community. So, that was important for us to include a community center in that facility that will be free for the public to use. And so, we're excited about that to be the first community center we have in any of the fire facilities. So, with that, we'll move on to constraints.
So, here's some constraints that we have from several projects. In the department RMS system, the police department, you know, we want to implement a solid product. As you know, we went, we were in implementation of a RMS product. It didn't work out well. We now have a consultant going, or working with us to make sure that we have something that's going to meet our needs and meet our requirements. The mobile command vehicle I mentioned earlier, I said it earlier, this current vehicle doesn't meet our needs. It never really did. In the worst-case scenario for public safety, we just want to make sure that we're supporting the system as best possible. Example I would give you is we have our dispatch center. If that ever goes down, we can't take 911 calls. We have to refer them out, and some calls will get missed. That kind of resource would provide us the ability to use it as a mobile public safety answering point. The substation, I mentioned those constraints earlier. We don't have a spot built identified yet. We're going to continue working on that item.
So, fire administration, operations, EMS, emergency management. We talked about some of the significant program enhancements we've made across the ambulance, the emergency management program itself, fire station construction. I could go on and on about the projects, but we're one of the largest departments in the city, but we have the smallest administrative staff. And it's becoming evident that we are not able to efficiently and effectively implement and maintain the programs that we have because we just don't have the staff to do that. And what we're ending up doing is using our line battalion chiefs to do project management. One, that's problematic from a scheduling standpoint, where they work different shifts than a lot of our other internal stakeholders. But more importantly, as you're going to see, jumping down to the last point, we have a very, very young department. We need those battalion chiefs out in the field, mentoring, training, teaching those employees, and help cultivating them and making sure that they're prepared, not just for today, but contingency and succession planning into the future. So, we have significant needs for a chief officer as well as analyst work. You know, there are, you know, cities that have entire departments or divisions that run an ambulance service delivery program. We have staff that are trying to do 10 different things at one time, and that's just one component of their capacity or their assignment. So, an analyst-level position would allow us to do more program management, again, use data analytics, but it would go across multiple programs and help us really solve that logjam and really get our staff back doing the things that they need to do, you know, both from a leadership standpoint and from a program administrative standpoint. And then finally, difficult to procure supplies and services in a timely manner. Part of that's due to the fact that we just don't have the staff. Some of it's the programs that we're trying to implement, for example, the annual physicals for us. The knowledge of how to put that RFP didn't exist within the finance division, within procurement, or within the fire department. So, we had to bring that project back into the fire department and self-teach and create that RFP on our own, which is a significant draw on staff and time. And we can see to see those types of issues, which in the end just causes delays and choke points within, you know, the procure the supplies or implement the programs and the policy changes that we need to make within the fire department.
Great, great. I want to thank both of you for your information. I'm going to call a recess right now for five true minutes. So, refresh yourselves, reset your mind a little bit. You need to check your phones, your emails, the restrooms. There's water back here in five minutes. How about 7:30, huh?
Okay, great, we're back, we're back, we're back. I want to thank everybody for being expeditious on their way back as we get back into our meeting. I hope that everybody thoroughly enjoyed the recess and we're ready to go for community services and sustainable infrastructure.
And we're going to start off with that. So can you give mayor Cleyton over the CSA, which includes myself, Tony Enga, and Stephen R. Tend? So our major accomplishments for 1920, staff awarded construction contracts for six CIP projects valued at 7.8 million. We initiated 10 CIP projects with an estimated value of 30 million. Initiated several master plans including updates for sewer, water, storm drain utilities, parks and recreation, Peta's sports center, and the bicycle pedestrian trail facilities. Also watched the community odor monitoring pilot program that was coordinated with Backman on the implementation of their regional odor study. Completed critical infrastructure repair and rehabilitation projects, including pump and wet well cleaning in preparation for the storm season. Completed resiliency projects on key infrastructure in preparation for the PG&E planned public safety power shut-off events. Say that five times quickly. Moving on, we completed the first enrollment period for the Mopetis Assistance Program, which we also call MAP. And we vetted 469 applications with our first enrollment period. Hosted over 24,000 people at 40 citywide events and concerts. We implemented the first Mopetis youth force summer team work program, which was directed by our city council. And that hosted 20 students and city businesses and city departments. Successful program. Hosted three mental health trainings in collaboration with the county's behavioral health. Relaunched the My Mopetis app and implemented a new computer maintenance management system to track work requests in our public works department. Implemented vehicle lease program to green our city fleet. Initiated work with an energy services company, NG Incorporated. And finally worked with finance to secure 55 million in bond financing for critical water and sewer infrastructure projects. I'll hand it over to Tony to go over our work plans.
Good evening, our city council members. Under our major work plan items, this is some of the recreation, engineering, public work departments under our CSA. We have completed and bidding out the construction of the fire station two replacement. It's going to be a huge project in our engineering department. Got several CIP projects being planned. I know there's going to be several discussions about this as we go into our CIP season itself. But we're going to initiate 10 CIP valued at about close to $18 million. Just some key highlight projects that are expected would be the traffic calming and enhanced sidewalks. So speaks right into some of the server results that we picked up from earlier. We also have some major infrastructure projects being planned, one of those being the odor emissions control project at our main lift station. That construction should be started sometime this spring. And we also have some installation of some new pumps at our water systems to ensure we maintain a proper pressure and water quality in our systems. We have the implementation of our water flushing program. Is there a NoDAS truck? This is a project of a equipment that was approved by council a few years back. We took delivery of that unit this early last year. Councilman Nunes happened to be driving by while that was being delivered and saw a very happy man jumping around out there.
Yes, you did.
So that really just goes to maintaining our superb water quality in our systems. We also have the assessment of our performing arts center. And we're planning on coming back to council recommendations on that performing arts center, including the size, location, uses, and some funding options for council consideration and direction of staff. And then finally, not finally, but just for this slide here, we've got the lead and implement sustained public outreach focus on marketing plan for Mopetis Hope. It's also known as our suicide prevention task force. Continuing on with our major work plans out of the CSA, we have the issuance of our RRP to update our climate action plan. That's actually, the RRP is actually out right now. We've got different contractors bidding on that right now. So we should be coming to council sometime in the next few months with a recommendation on who we want to work with. And the next engagement partner after that would be engaging with council and the community on the updates on those efforts. So stay tuned for that. We're going to continue to implement the Mopetis Assistance Programs and assess the subsidy use levels and trends after two full enrollment cycles. So we're going to bring that information forward and also develop the LVO, Adobe House Dosset, and field trip program. It's out of our recreation department. And as was mentioned earlier, and there's some questions coming up about that, we're going to continue to work with NG to obtain council approval and investment grade audit. That information is coming back to you February 4th. So we have a February 4th council meeting and we're going to bring NG actually here to discuss some of those preliminary energy conservation measures with you for your consideration and guidance to staff on what we should be looking forward to. We also have the implementation of tree planting program based on the recommendations from this recently completed city's urban forest management plan. With the goal there of trying to explore whether the city can become a tree U.S. Safe in recognition. So might add a pride there for us. So we're hoping council supports that effort for us. And finally, we're looking to work on doing an update to the recreation and park fees for the city. And that's going to be work coming out of our recreation department.
Evening. So even though we completed a lot of great things this last year, and we've got some great work planned, we do have some operational challenges that we're looking to try to resolve. These include a lack of dedicated revenue sources to fund major CIP infrastructures, replacements for the storm drain, parks, and city facilities. Staff vacancies and turnover constraints, volume of work that we can't complete. The impacts of new state mandates, and these would be from the regional water quality control board, for instance. Also the state, this would affect underground locate, location of underground utilities, which is a requirement. Accessibility to after asset data and challenges with data and records management. This is part of the GIS infrastructure that we're improving. Development of modern standard operating policy procedures, department and citywide. And attraction and retention of qualified staff. Challenge both on the private side as well as the public. So that completes the presentation for this CSA.
Very well. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question. If I agree with him, look at the park fees and such, aren't those included in the master?
They are included. This effort is to update them and to kind of clarify the I and recognize.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Van.
Has there been any updates from the water district as to developments with the flood wall? And, you know, are we at risk of, you know, potential flooding as seawater rise continues to occur?
Well, a portion of the city is within the special flood hazard zone as defined by FUEL. So homes within those areas are required to purchase flood insurance if they have a mortgage. It's federally backed. The water district has completed at least two projects recently in the city to help mitigate floods. This would be, currently it's on Bariessa Creek. So it's both Upper Bariessa Creek, so from 237th South into San Jose. And Lower Bariessa Creek, which is from 237 North up to approximately Jack McRoe. Those projects have been completed. Levy has been improved and that, the idea would be to take properties out of the flood zone. The district has two other projects that they're working on. One is a portion of Clara Creek. And the other is Lower Penitencia from approximately McCarthy Boulevard to San Andreas Drive. Those projects are in the design phase, are about 90% complete and designed. I don't have a date when they're going to be in construction. So those projects are to, the purpose would be to try to remove properties from the special flood hazard zone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
I apologize. There's one more question. On the major work plan items. The one, the second bullet.
There's two slides.
Yeah, so maybe the next one. Mine says initiate 10.
That's it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, that one, of course, says traffic calming and enhanced crosswalks. Where, is that going to be discussed at the traffic subcommittee?
Sure, we can bring a quick update on that.
Okay. But I'm not part of it. I just wanted to know where persons are going to be able to discuss whatever you're going to come up with before it becomes forward to the full council. And then the performing arts center. What body is that going to cut to? The Park and Ranks Commission or?
That's a good question. So we have two commissions that sort of work on arts and also recreation facilities. So it would go to the Parks and Rec Commission for facility use, recreation facilities. And then it would also visit the Arts Commission as far as the performing arts piece of it. So it would, it would visit both. Ultimately, as a facility, the final recommendation would probably come through the Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
As a way to funnel that, yeah.
If you took a bite, I'd like to leave a couple of slides.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, anybody else? Yes, councilmember Montana.
So I don't see on these major work plan items, the skate, skate park, is that in there somewhere?
What's other construction? So we anticipate completion late summer, this summer.
Very well.
So we're going to talk about the community development service area next. And that consists of economic development under the direction of Alex, planning under the direction of Ned, and engineering land development under the direction of Steve Erickson. Fire prevention under Chief Shador and part of local Albert Zamora. And then building safety and housing, and yourself. So all these two programs, you all work collaboratively to support the development community and to make sure the development projects happen. And if you drive around town, I think you'll see that our, our service area seems pretty busy, lots of stuff happening. And these photos represent some of our activities. Some of the major accomplishments so far, in October 2019, council adopted the pilot relief program, free review program, and just cause protection for tenants through urgency ordinances. And those actions by the council really put Mopetis at the front of housing assistance and tenant protection. Because a number of cities actually followed our lead and adopted those emergency orders as well, including Sea Valley, Long Beach, Redwood City, Menlo Park. So as far as some numbers for our activities, so far we've issued close to 2,000 building permits, 300 fire permits, 121 encroachment permits, conducted over 12,000, actually that number doesn't look right, sorry, it's 12, over 12,000 inspections, and approved the 1,226 tining applications.
Good. The number.
Yeah, I think.
It's updated here.
Sharon, can we, a quick bit of time as to how long it takes from the point of entitlement to the permit?
That's something we can look into and bring up.
Yeah, I'd love, you could follow that.
So all the way from entitlement to completion of construction.
Sure. From the application process. Just because I want to see how the planning application works to, in relation to the building and permitting process.
Okay, yeah, we can map out more timeline for the process. And then in December, council also adopted building codes, fire codes, and reach codes to promote green development and streamlined local amendments. So we're implementing those codes right now. During the budget sessions last year, council offered a new fee structure as a result of our new fee study. So we implemented that brand-new fee calculation methodology for development projects. And that has really simplified and streamlined our permitting process to help improve our development project. And as part of the matrix study, we've also been working on improving our permit turnaround times, streamlining our permit processes, and implementing an engineering inspection scheduling system. And we're going to continue to work on these process and technology improvements in the development community. We completed some real estate transactions and property acquisitions for city facilities and pretty common purposes. And another accomplishment is launching workforce development initiatives, including organizing manufacturing aid and launching student apprentice program with private sector and public education partners.
So just continuing on a few of the accomplishments from the Community Development CSA. As you know, we collaborate among economic development, planning, building. A lot of them are various policy plans. Sharon touched upon some of the, a lot of the housing initiatives that have taken up on the planning side. Of course, we're working, continuing work on the general plan update. And we also presented late last year a new strategic direction for the, what we're calling the Gateway, Milpitas Main Street plan. And we hope to get that kicked off later this spring. And then, of course, over in Economic Development, they've been working on the Economic Development Strategy. And as you know, from the presentations that we've given to the council, all of these various projects and planning initiatives all overlap. We're working together on those. Sharon gave you some of the numbers for all of the permits and the inspections that are being done. We have about 15 active projects down in the task area alone. And that represents hundreds of new units. And literally every month, probably hundreds, if not thousands of inspections. There are different work that's being done, both in building and planning and fire safety and the land development side too. So there's a lot of activities carrying on. You know, with regard to the task, we're also looking long-term as well. We were right at the threshold of hiring and bringing to the council a contract for the task consultant to update that plan as well. And we discussed with you some of the particulars there, maybe looking at some boundary adjustments and adjusting some of the densities. We're 10 years into the plan, it's been very successful. But what can we do to take it a little bit further and look at some of the public realm and amenities that need to be added to make that a truly great place? So we'll be bringing that forward to council as well. Of course, toward the end of last year, we also brought forward to an adjustment to the task fees so that all of the infrastructure that was needed down in that area will be covered by those fees. In addition, we brought a number of zoning ordinance amendments to the council and received approval on those. Those were in response to changing needs of the community. One related to assembly uses, you know, wanted to protect our industrial areas. We had another related to ADUs. Tomorrow night, we'll be taking the short-term rental ordinance to the Planning Commission that will be coming forward to the council. So we continue to tinker and to make necessary adjustments to our zoning ordinance to keep up with both changing state regulations as well as local community needs. We've done a lot of outreach in the CSA, in particular, you know, around all of the housing initiatives. Sharon and the Housing Department led a number of neighborhood meetings and with different neighborhood groups. Of course, with economic development, we're working with the Economic Development Commission as well as neighborhood groups. And then I may have to talk to Armando about getting some of the body cameras for planners if we have any more flat planning proposals that come forward that are, keep us in long meetings with the Planning Commission. We enjoy those. We also initiated some project improvement, or some process improvements. The main one being the establishment of that zoning administrator process. And that has greatly streamlined the way that we're able to review projects that are, that need to, help meet the needs of our developers. And then, and also along process improvements, we renewed six environmental, six contracts with environmental firms to do our C work. And then the last thing I'll mention, this is a little bit of overlap with the other CSA, but the Green Infrastructure Plan, which is required by the Regional Water Quality Board, is something that was updated and that's completed in the past year as well. And that's to help with ensuring clean water and the management of our stormwater system within the city.
Thank you.
Continuing with the work plan, the development service areas, we continue to collaborate on increasing affordable housing production and preservation. And we're going to bring forward some entry guidelines for the affordable housing ordinance. And we've started the next renewal process for the next eight-year cycle. And we'll participate in this housing collaborative with other jurisdictions in the county. So that'll be a regional effort. And as mentioned earlier, we have done the matrix study, Master of Development Services. So we continue to streamline and improve our processes, evaluate and update our performance measures, and looking at policies and procedures to see where we can improve. And of course, the new stay law and those that were passed last year, we're working on implementing those as well. As part of our technology improvements, we're going to be upgrading our permitting system, improving our time review system, enhance our data capability and integration with other systems in the city, also to improve our records management. And all of this is to implement technology to enhance service delivery that should ultimately really help out our development community. And as we mentioned, since we adopted the new codes, we've been implementing those and also helped to educate our development community and residents to meet the new codes. And we'll continue to work with BTM Bar on the opening of the Milpitas Park Station and fire monthly meetings with those transit agencies. And we'll continue to implement the FEMA flood insurance program and complete the major flood control projects by Santa Clara Valley Water, Value Water District. And on the recruitment side, all of us being with the assistance of HR Department, of course, to continue to fill our vacancies. So these are just some examples of the positions. They're all at different stages, but we all continue to, you know, board our needed staff for our developer.
So are these department accomplishments or are these just the items that we hope to accomplish?
These are all our work plan items we're working on.
Okay. And as of this, where we are in the fiscal year, is there, is there real-time progress that you can share with us?
Yes. I guess some examples would be, like the third bullet, you're going to see the contract in front of you. It's the next, it's one of the meetings in February for the permit system.
Okay. And so, you know, for the second bullet, performance measures, what, can you elaborate what some of those measures are?
Yeah, we started that effort during the budget, budget cycle last year, and we continue that this time. So, for example, in the budget book, there are some different metrics of how we review all of our processes and workload data. And so we're trying to come up with something that's a little more meaningful. Like, for example, you know, for building permits, there was a measure that was talking about the number or percentage of projects that meeting turnaround times. But it doesn't really actually indicate what the turnaround time was. So we actually looked at that last year and said, you know, instead of just telling people percent meeting turnaround time, we thought it was more meaningful to say percentage of projects meeting, or like large projects, first turnaround in 30 days. And then that gives a more concrete, more solid idea.
When do we get to see, you know, like a, we reflect back on those numbers?
Then during the budget process, we will be looking at that.
So we're using, yeah, okay. Thank you. Same turnaround times too, right? We're working on that now in the CSA, so. Okay, great.
Yeah.
Like, we recognize the need as well, like having meaningful performance measures to bring to the council. So if I were, or if we, you know, not just saying, well, here's what we're working on, but how that's actually actually like performance. Yeah, if, when we get a chance to have a look at that, if we can see some numbers, it may really help.
Yeah, those are all actual data from all of our activities.
Great. And we've got one more sheet of work plan items. I have covered most, I think the first four bullets under mine. These are both accomplishments and they continue, they're multi-year projects, so they will continue in the current year. Of course, the main one, we hope to complete the general plan in the current calendar year. So right now, the consultants are finishing up the last of the chapters or elements on land use and circulation. And then they're also having done work on the environmental impact report, which is a heavy lift for that particular project. So we're well on our way. Again, thanks to the council and the clear direction you gave us back toward the end last year. Touched upon task and gateway. On this one, I'll just mention really quickly the SB 2 grant. This was presented to the council a couple of months ago. We have heard that they've received our application. We haven't heard whether or not they have questioned course or they've rewarded it. This is $310,000 to come to city. It's a non-competitive grant, so it will come once they're comfortable with the programs that we have proposed them. Those programs include developing objective design standards, which is something that's actually required of us now under new state legislation, SB 330. What an objective design standard does is it greatly simplifies our review process. It's more of a yes or no checkbox as to whether or not a project meets a certain standard. It's a little bit tricky, you know, a lot of design is somewhat subjective rather than objective. So to get to those objective design standards, we'll be working with the consultants that's worked with other cities on developing these standards. We also want to, another big part of it is creating what we're calling a toolbox for ADUs. This will be information that will make it simple for homeowners who are interested in building an ADU or even just exploring that, to both design and locate it on their property. And it kind of creates, I refer to it as a concierge service at the city specifically targeted to ADUs. So I think that will be a really great program for, you know, to highlight the city's interest in encouraging developmental opportunities as well. Again, always with an eye towards the big picture of addressing our affordable housing problem. Are ADUs a focus of the planning department or is that, you know, the building? Or how, how are we prioritizing that? Yeah, so it's very much a collaborative effort between building, housing, and the planning department. The grant, we worked with them very closely to put together the metrics and the scope for the grant itself. And then as we're developing, the program will work again very closely to make sure. Because we, we will, on the planning side over our counter, we will, we receive the applications and process them. But as we do that, we have, we work with the building department on the.
You're the lucky winner every time. It happens every time. But carry on, carry on. Does the planning commission review any of the ADUs? It's all about.
Those are all, those are all preview administrators.
So it's not the purview?
Pretty much over the counter.
It's not the purview of the planning commission?
No.
No discretionary? Okay, thanks.
The rest of this is Alex's.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Senate Deputies.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Alex Andrade. I serve as your Director of Economic Development. If I could be here, I'm just going to move forward. Economy equals the health of your community. So I'll remind you that one of your council priorities is economic development, job growth. So we are moving forward with our economic development strategy. We were before you in November under a study session. We finally have our strategies. They are hot off the press from our consultants from City Economics as of last week. We're not ready to share them just yet, but I will say that we are going to be reaching out to you under a preview of these strategies in the next month. And within the following eight topic areas. So the first one is high-tech and advanced manufacturing, light industrial manufacturing and warehouse and distribution, retail and restaurant, small business, entrepreneurship, and displacement protection of small business. We've heard that as an important component of the overall economic development strategy, as well as an innovation district and transit-oriented development strategies, amenities and public realm, city marketing and processes, and of course workforce development and education resources. Oh, now that it's in front of you, I'll move on to the next one. Better Block. Better Block is both a nonprofit organization and actually the strategy of what they do. It's a community engagement tool. So what we're intending to do, thank you to the, to receiving funding, is invigorate and activate South Main Street. So we're looking at activating in particular South Main Street where Sarah Center hits that general area. And so our consultant is actually here today, and actually has been here for two days. We've done community engagement with various businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, city staff. And so we're looking at developing an event for late May. And so this is really just creating better, one Better Block at a time. And so the activity could be a result in temporary pop-up shops, parklets, bike paths, outdoor seating, and other placemaking ideas. We talked to the superintendent of the school district. There might be a partnership there with us. And then they're doing a school Olympics during that same weekend. So we're trying to get creative and see if we can partner till that weekend. The other important item is a Pilot Facade Improvement Grant Program, of which Raza is leading and helping us in that respect. This is a storefront improvement program. Again, it's a revitalization tool in the toolbox. We have several property owners and business owners that are interested. We have a framework that's ready to go, which is approved by our Economic Development Trade Commission. We're working on the application as well as the contract. We're looking at 15, up to $15,000 grants for storefront improvements. The next item is the Small Business Resource Workshop. We are partnering with the Silicon Valley Small Business Development Center and our Chamber of Commerce on developing small business resource workshops. We have six that we're planning for this year, this calendar year. Our first one will start next month. The workshop's topics are as follows. How to buy a business, how to sell a business, business valuation, restaurant program for food and beverage service, small business financing for starting and expanding your business, and succession planning for those that have been successful in owning a business. Moving on to the International Trade Program. This is something we're going to be sharing with you further at the February 18th council meeting. It'll be a progress report on international trade. In the last week and a half, we have had meetings with Joe Hedges of the City of San Jose. He operates the Foreign Trade Zone. We've learned that the Foreign Trade Zone service area is all of the Santa Clara County. So we're going to begin to market that to our businesses. And as a matter of fact, just today, we have contacted on and on a local manufacturing business. And they'll be contacting Joe. We're going to spearhead that. And we hope that we're able to have a business that's able to save in duties costs by creating this foreign trade zone. We also are looking to partner with the, with small business, or rather, the US Department of Commerce. We actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with a woman named Joanne Villette. And we're trying to learn more about foreign direct investment. And we're talking about import and export strategies. And last, certainly not least, we are engaged in a digital billboard lease agreement. That lease agreement is underway with Clear Channel. We're partnering, of course, with the planning department as it relates to the permit, which is a site development permit, which is required, as well as design and environmental review. And since we're talking about the budget, this will ultimately result in what we believe will be a long-term and important revenue source. So we hope to get back to you with the lease agreement soon. And the next slide has to do with the fact that we too have some operational constr- And the next slide has to do with the fact that we too have some operational constraints, and they are staff vacancies and turnovers, which definitely impact our work plans. We've talked about the importance of permit turnaround times. We're obviously going to be able to work on that and give more information to you, as well as just operational improvements that require training and transition period for new staff. So an example of that is, we have, we were talking in-house about developing a expedited special tenant improvement program, and it's ready to go, but we need to make sure to train the new folks that have come in, and we would expect to launch that perhaps sometime in the spring. Other things too, that we would believe it's a challenge, is we're experiencing shifting priorities at times that can create inefficiencies in completing staff work and assignments. Sometimes there's rushed or compressed deadlines that can compromise thoroughness and quality of work products. We definitely need more cross-training of the permit counter staff in order to respond to minor questions, maintain online records, and provide administrative support. And last is enhanced GIS, permit tracking, productivity, and social media technology tools, recommended to improve staff efficiency and customer service. That concludes our CSA presentation. Have any questions, of course.
Counselor Finn. Yeah. Do we have an FTE for the permit counter?
The number of FTEs, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two permit technicians and two office staff.
They're full-time.
Yes, they're full-time, except, you know, we just actually experienced a vacancy starting the beginning of this year. And we're actually, not to jump the gun, but, you know, to kind of improve our services, we're thinking about doing a little bit of reorganization that can really help improve that.
Okay, 'cause sometimes I'll see Michael Facati working the counter, and then the next day he'll have to present an entitlement vote to the council. I'm like, man, they're really working you here.
Well, when, yeah, so our counter staff, you know, they're kind of also serve as the city hall receptionists in a way, because you're walking through the first floor, right? So when it's development services, if they have specific questions for planning or engineering, then we page out the staff that's on duty for, during that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think when you saw Michael, he was the planner on duty at that time.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I know our staff rotates, and I think your team rotates, and I believe Steve's team as well rotate with counter coverage.
Okay.
So that during the time, there are another.
Are you guys kind of rotating?
I'll kind of rotate. We stay, but we don't rotate.
All right, that was good. Let's carry on, please. Thank you, thank you. Any further, yes, Vice Mayor, please.
Real quick. I think I say that before everything I say. But I'm not going to ask every question I have. On the very first slide, we talked about organized and launched workforce development initiatives, and the two really are student-driven, school-driven. So someplace later on, you talk about those that are more about companies. So are we going to get something that actually talks about those? You said, we're, I didn't quite understand what you said, what we're going to get that talks more about corporations and other than student-based.
So it sounds like there might be two, two different bodies of work there. One is workforce development, and the other one maybe was related to trade? Is that right?
Well, so when I look at workforce development, I'm also looking at, at your department as a whole. I hear a lot about the workforce development part.
Yeah.
I don't see the rest. I know it's going on, so I'm just looking for something that I could hold on to and read or go to a presentation.
Sure.
And I thought I heard you say that, but is there a vote going to be, do the commission that I should come to? Where are you going to make a presentation to council?
So I guess I should start with saying, we are the Office of Economic Development, but we do economic development, community development, workforce development, and real estate.
I get that, I get that.
We, we can certainly provide and have provided a presentation to our Economic Development Trade Commission on the Manufacturing Day, which happened on October fourth. It was our third annual, continues to grow. We exposed thirty-five high school students to advanced manufacturing and technology careers by taking tours of On and On, Headway Technologies, which is part of TDK, and Flex. And so that was a huge success. We're partnering with MUSD as well as the Chamber of Commerce.
And I get all that, it's, it's the other side. So when we talk about sister cities.
Yeah.
It's, I sort of thought that would be the introduction to some of those cities, about the kinds of things it would take to sort of move on to other types of things with us. What would enhance a company to want to come here? And those kinds of things. I'm just wondering where I could go and see that, and the efforts you're doing there.
You're going to receive a, this progress report on February eighteenth, that will give you more information about where we are in developing the international trade program. It's business-to-business, it's commerce, it's workforce development as well. And so I kind of alluded to earlier, we're on this best practices research tour, I would say, in order to ensure that we can actually provide value to our businesses. So for example, we reached out to On and On, and the facilities director and I had a conversation, I explained to them what we are intending to do in international trade, which is to collaborate with businesses that are in Milpitas who have a global presence. The response was, well, why would you do that? We're already doing that. That was a couple of weeks ago. And then yesterday, we explained to him, we have a foreign trade zone, and there might be some savings as it relates to duties. And he called us back right away, and now we have a meeting with Joe Hedges of the City of San Jose that oversees foreign trade zone eighteen, which is this larger mass outside of the City of San Jose. It encompasses Santa Clara County and beyond. So we're connecting those businesses to the potential of saving money for duties, but we expect that to grow. Foreign direct investment, workforce development, hopefully business-to-business.
And it's those kinds of things I'd like to hear about, but I'm just not sure where to go to hear about them, is all.
Council meeting, February eighteenth.
Thank you very much. I know I'll be there.
He will be there.
The major accomplishment list, and this is sort of an overall, all encompassing type of statement, question. I think the first year I was here, we had a joint meeting with the council and the planning commission. And we talked, you know, the fact that we were new councilperson and ideas we had, they gave us some ideas of things that they wanted to do. I don't recall having one since then, but what I, what I hear a lot are developers that come up and say, so Bob, why do you want this? And whatever it is, they'll, they'll say it. Normally I say, I didn't know I wanted that. They go, well, I'm hearing from staff that this is the direction that council would like to go. So I'm trying to figure out how staff, how staff understands council's position on development in the city.
Many times, I think those comments come from staff based on what we, the feedback we receive from you on various development projects that we present in the meetings, or as we present some of our long-range planning projects to you in a workshop format, a lot of times in this room, getting feedback. We always tell them that we are not, we don't speak for the council, but this is what we have heard the council say in previous meetings. That's usually where that feedback is coming from.
So I would ask that at least once a year, we look at trying to get together, because the planning commission does change, and actually has changed quite a bit. I don't know what to do with staff about that, but, but that we sit down and talk about, as we did that first year, you know, what is it that we're looking to do? When we talked about ADUs, and when we talked about where we're going with development and things of that sort. Because I'm still hearing this is the direction that the council wants to go, and when I hear that, it is, I don't ever say, no, that's not what we're doing. Because I don't, when they say council, I don't know what that really means. If it's not me that's involved in that conversation, that doesn't mean it's not somebody else. But I just find it uncomfortable sometimes to say, I don't think that's the direction we're going in, or I don't know that to be the direction we're going in. But I often wonder how does staff come up with their opinions about what direction we're going in? And I don't talk to really staff outside of those that are sitting here now. I don't seek out staff in planning to say, here's what I think we're going to do on that today. So I say that so that we don't end up crossing wires someplace, or that they go down a path, because I don't, that we end up answering in a different way than staff is directing or suggesting. Because I don't think that's good for the council or for a developer coming in, is all.
Yeah, I concur with that assessment. I think especially when council gives direction during a public hearing, if there, if the direction is not made clear, you know, you're open to take it back to council for further feedback, but we want to make sure that council direction is implemented accordingly and appropriately and not misinterpreted. I don't know, you know, if that requires a second review from the attorney's office or whatnot, but when we give, when we provide council direction, if there's anything that's made unclear, let us know at the public hearing, and please make sure that, you know, it's not misquoted, misdirected, or in any way that, you know, it's explicitly clear there. I think that's, you know, very simplistic.
And I'll follow up with that, definitely. I, I just want to use this case example to really emphasize where the resolution can happen, and that's the city manager's office. And so any type of case where this may or may not occur, I want to encourage everybody in this whole city, every single person, go to city manager's office.
Steve, don't screw up.
He won't.
I actually, could I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the feedback, and that's something that I know with economic development and other departments, we've been seeing. I also think that it's really important, I love whoever added the report section for councils, commissions, I don't even know how it's worded really on the agenda, but someone added it, and I love it because I do believe that also as the council members, that it is our responsibility to, as the liaisons, to bring back that information and really draft what we're hearing in the council, and talking with our commissions and aligning it, to ensure that we are giving direction during our commission meetings to staff as a liaison, and then reporting back to the council and to the community. That way, it does leverage the responsibility off of the city manager, because I do believe that the city manager has a responsibility to lead the entire city. So I know all of us are more than capable and willing, and we're here ready to make sure that we add to helping with streamlining that work, because it is, as we've seen today, so many slides, and each department only has the capability of two to three staff members, it feels like, because of the nature of the city. But I do think that's something that we could speak on in further, and I thank you, Count Vice Mayor Nunez, for bringing this conversation up, because I do think it's really important for us to hold ourselves accountable as liaisons of the commission to really bring back and help staff understand a direction, and maybe we could streamline it ourselves through memos or directions while we are giving direction to staff.
Thank you very much.
Can I just add one more? You mentioned the housing collaborative, but I thought you mentioned, or you said it's from Alameda County?
No, it's Santa Clara.
Okay, thank you. I got the wrong county. Good, and I'm happy about that.
Very well. Every time Vice Mayor points, it's always a good point. Yes, it's all positive. It's never a.
He's reading it.
Okay, well, carry on here. Don't carry on here, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Liz Brown, Human Resources Director. Our CSA is Leadership and Support Services, and those departments include city manager's office, city clerk's office, finance, information technology, and human resources. As a reminder, the council priority for governance and administration was to continue to streamline processes or enhance services, and remain committed to long-term fiscal discipline and financial stewardship, excuse me. So our major accomplishments for, to date, for fiscal year nineteen twenty, is we have secured twenty million dollars in water and thirty-five million dollars in sewer revenue bonds for the critical infrastructure projects. We have published our first user-friendly budget inquiry, which provides citywide highlights for the agenda fund, for CIP, it's really nice. Walter, good job. This is very convenient for both the community and the employees. It gives them a nice snapshot of what's going on fiscally. Implemented SB nine-nine-eight, which is this water shut-off protection act, and to provide a, we are providing a sixty-three day notice versus sixty, which is good. Issued the eighteen-nineteen comprehensive annual financial report with a clean review, so that's good again. Congratulations, finance. We've filled forty-seven full-time positions to date and sixty-four part-time positions, and I'd like to thank all the departments in this room. They work really collaboratively with HR, couldn't do it without them, that's a lot of positions. We have negotiated successor MOUs with two bargaining units, both MidCon and ProTech. Thank you, city council, you made that happen.
Thank you.
We really appreciated that. We were able to do it in fairly record time. That was really well, is also a good thing. In collaboration with BBK, we implemented all of our mandated harassment prevention and discrimination training, which I know is also a council interest, to be sure we did, and we have accomplished that. We developed an employee mentoring program, which is launching tomorrow. We're really excited about that. We have twenty mentees and twenty mentors, and that's going to be for six months, so that's a new and exciting program for the city, as well as professional development training program, which is anticipated to launch in February, mid-February, and really excited about that as well. We're bringing on professional training that's going to teach people time management, discipline with self-discipline, with project management, emotional intelligence, a number of things, which is going to be a self-help type training, and people can sign up for that. We've implemented a new Intranet site to connect employees and resources efficiently. It's through SharePoint, and we're really excited. A group of employees in the city were on this committee, and they established an Intranet called Mint. And I think you heard about that, our employee recognition awards. That's, that was a very big success. We completed virtualization of servers for more effective management resilience and cost savings, and really what that means is we're eliminating hardware and we're utilizing the cloud, so that's been a big plus to the city, and it's saving quite a bit of money. Cybersecurity is on everyone's mind, and with improved technology, security, and systems, we have had cutting-edge technology use with Mike's leadership there. And of course, city clerk's office has been busy. They've prepared thirty-five city council agendas, agenda packets in minutes, and have kept things going for us. Those are our accomplishments to date.
So we're actually looking at major work plan items, and I want to shout out to Chris Diaz and his group. I've worked with five attorneys in this group already, and all of them have been there very responsibly, really helped us. been there very responsibly, really helped us. Thank you very much, Chris. We developed initiative proposal operating budgets, starting here today with the workshop we're doing with you. We're going to come back in April to fund, for the funding for the fire station to replacement. We are upgrading our CNAE system, city's financial technology system. And we are in the process, and we're inching forward, not to my fast pace, which I like to have, but we just don't have the staff capacity, to streamline procurement, technology, and processes. That's a key hindrance for departments. We're trying to get better at that. We're coming back on February 18th with the communication study, which the council directed us to do, the results of that study. One of the things which he heard from my partners here and these other CSAs, standard operating procedures to be updated, and we definitely wanna work on those, and we are working on those. Risk management is something which the city has been lacking. So you'll see, we're trying to develop a better program, made it require additional resources to facilitate forthcoming budget process. And as we mentioned, we are implementing a plan for the unfunded pension liability. Most of the recommendation to establish a 2015 trust, coming back to council, I believe, on March 3rd now. As a kickoff of the management program, I'm one of the mentors, and it's gonna be fun doing that. I did this in our cities as well. We have one MOU outstanding for the next of this year. It expires in this year with the employee association, so we're working on that. Onboarding is really important. How do we get our employees to accustom to our culture, to make sure they understand our rules and regulations, how we function as a city? And we want to implement a notification system for timing performance appraisals. So HR intends to send out notifications to departments, saying, "In three months, you have a bunch of performance appraisals due," and to get this going. Implement electronic filing, which we see. I'm sure you're gonna be happy to have that.
Yes.
And we are completing a strategic plan, and we'll come back to the council with the results of the plan as well. So what holds us back? Efficient systems, in this case procurement. We'll intend to come back to the council with recommendations on that item, probably next fiscal year, maybe end of fiscal year, we'll see how it works out. Retaining attractive talented staff. We have an unemployment rate of 3% in the valley, and local government is still in charge of the continent. And that's the issue we're having. Low unemployment rate, and obviously, framed folks. Update policy procedures. The real issue is the lack of capacity improvement. With the folks which have to update those policies, even with consultants, those are the same folks who have to run the operation. So it's trying to trade off between helping our departments out, getting their recruitments done, getting the procurements done, getting their bills paid, and at the same time, establishing more better systems for that. The work volume is not aligned with staff capacity. We heard this today from other CSAs as well, challenged with that, and especially when it comes to implementing systems. Because what happens if you want a key expert in procurement, implement a procurement system, that key expert needs to do a lot of things as well. So that's a trade-off. I see this with a budget system this time, that we, it's tough to get this all done.
Chris, is this something that your firm handles, some of the internal procurement policies and updating the policies?
If you're going to electronic or technology-based system, there'd obviously be an outside vendor that would help with that. But Kevin Wang of my office works really closely with all the purchasing staff, Walter's department, and just to get more efficiency. And I think once we get to this different system, it's gonna, it's gonna create a lot more efficiency within the purchasing department, in my opinion.
And then we take municipal changes to the council indicates, obviously, very helpful writing those codes for changing ordinances. And then build the staff training. We need to keep the skills and the knowledge of the car, but that obviously takes away time at the offices. So that concludes our CSA presentations, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ashwin, and we go into...
We're gonna take a couple of comments here.
I'm ready.
Somebody's gonna get you out of here.
I know you do. I want to go...
Let's get into it. Vice Mayor, please.
Yes, I'm gonna go quick. Can I change the order a little bit? I didn't notice legal Chris at all in here. So is there another C or CAS?
Well, Chris...
I think it's for all CSAs.
Well, that's okay.
The work plans you've seen, the accomplishments, yes, we're in the background working with staff and research and all that stuff. Some of that happens...
So you think that works, right?
But that is true.
Okay, I buy that. But I mean, so how do we, so how do we, see, has Anthony brought that up? I was sitting here thinking, I was listening to every department talk about what they used to do, what they're doing, and what they're going to do. We just didn't have the opportunity to hear you do that. And I'd like to.
We can do that. I think you'll hear a lot of repeat based on what departments have presented, because we've worked hand-in-hand with the departments.
I'm okay with that.
But I think your budget, I'm happy to do that.
Well, mostly because I know that when I first got here, you were reviewing lots of contracts out of finance and so on. I'm a firm believer that once you've done that enough, then you squeeze it down to the 5%. Because there's lots of other things that I believe an attorney should be doing for a city this size. You weren't able to do that when you first came here because, because. But now that because isn't here, so maybe we should take a look at other things you could be doing. But I really would like it from your point of view. Maybe, maybe it's too early still. But I just noticed Chris wasn't there.
Let's have him come back to a meeting. He can have his own agenda.
Major accomplishments. I don't know, major accomplishments. I did not understand the third bullet.
Virtualization servers?
No, I don't know what that, you were trying to tell us something, Mike, so what does that really mean? So, maybe just for me.
Yeah, that's right. So basically, what this technology allows to do is, let's say, prior to virtualization being available, you have one physical server that serves, you know, an application. So now, what this allows us to do is put 10 software servers on one physical server, some for my inefficiency, power consumptions. So basically, you have 10 workhorses on top of one physical box.
Because we went to the cloud, together?
That was part of it.
Part of it. And then the next step that we can bring forward within the year is to bring forward that next step where now you have not only ease of management, but disaster recovery. So all of that packaged into protections against ransomware, everything will be able to recover really fast, and it basically recover with no loss of data or anything like that.
So is Rochelle still here?
Yeah.
You may want to ask her at least my feeling on that. I'm not the, I am the least techie person up here. So I'm having the most difficulty dealing with that third bullet. And I apologize. You know, I can't get my calendar to work, since we went to the cloud. I can't keep my, anything, you know, my emails or anything else. So if we think we're there, I usually, when I think I'm there, I go to the person that's having the most difficulty. If they're there, they're set. If that person's not there, we're not. I think of the five of us, I'm the worst.
You get the best technology, that's for sure.
That's all, that's all I can carry. That's it. So I decided to mention that. Establish the work plan items. Establish a robust risk management system. I forget who said that.
I said that.
So does that mean up to and including a risk management office?
So I'm the official risk manager for the city, of virtue of being the finance director. What I started working, we work with Plan JPA, which owns Children's School. They have certain services they provide. So when I got here six months ago, so I started working with them, see, the first thing what you do is risk managers, what's my loss prevention data? We go back five years to create a report for us. Now I know the frequency of data, I know my department, I know the large cases, but I don't have the staff not doing it on us. So I have the data. But then Plan JPA said to me, "Well, now it's up to you, city, to implement that." So I have a data position, which previously more claims management and lower-level tasks. And we are working with the city manager's office, how can we change the position, cause they issued an elders' position, and then the elders would be tasked to actually be analysis, work with departments, establish a robust safety program, and make sure that the best practice Plan JPA has available, we bring over to the city, irrespective of departments. And some departments are really doing well. I talked to police, I talked to fire, I talked to recreation. Every time there's insurance issue, they're right on top of it. Those ones that interact the most, which is high-risk on public boards too, but still, we'll give you...
So there's, so I'm very supportive of that. I think that the risk management office will pay for itself. So I just want to say that. And if you, I think we really studied that, you will find that we actually would find the money that would come out of the payments we're already making. It would come back in safety credits, it would come back in a number of ways to pay for the positions for that department. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. We'll go ahead and carry on.
So the next few slides will capture the items that have recently been discussed by council, or submitted as agenda item requests. And so we'll provide a few updates on this. We would welcome any additional clarification or feedback. And then the goal really is, based on council discussion today, we hope to finalize a list of items that we can develop a workload and cost analysis on, and then seek prioritization from council. This will allow us to develop the proposed budget based on those additional items, because you already saw we have several work plan items already underway. So these will be additional ones. We wanna try and identify any impacts to our workload of funding, and then seek additional council directions. So these were the seven priority areas. Again, if you had any feedback on any of these, we have grouped the items, you know, aligned with the council priority areas as well. So again, like I said, these are items that came up either in a council meeting or as a agenda item request. So the first two in public safety, you already heard, the police substation is already on the work plan, so that's underway. We received some feedback from council about additional call center staffing. And so we'll take a look at that as we're developing the budget. On some of these items, I'm gonna let Steve Erickson talk to some of them. The speed enforcement cameras came up as a question. We looked into it, and Steve can provide more information. And then other items are already in the CIP. They may not be this year's CIP, but the next year's. So Steve, you wanna cover those.
Sure. So, Councilmember Fanning, you had a question a couple meetings ago about the City of Fremont's effort in speed enforcement cameras. Actually, in December, what they had acquired was 30 solar-powered radar speedback signs. So we have something, we have those in the city. They're not an enforcement mechanism. In other words, the police department cannot use those. But like I said, we have several. We also have a currently funded project for installation of those throughout the city that was funded this last cycle. Staff is working on those, so...
Were they grant-funded on that?
They're, it's not grant-funded. It's, I believe, funded through gas tax currently. So locations, we'd be targeting like school areas, school zones, and areas with high pedestrian counts.
Next.
Okay, so next.
Oh, sorry.
So it is, I want to make sure I understand, it is, because I didn't hear the police chief talk about it earlier, but, so is this, we're just gonna, I'm trying to find the outcome we're looking for today. Is this just to inform us?
No, so we are hoping, what we thought we could do is that we go through this list, and we give you any additional information we have, and then seek any clarification. Some items we do need clarification on, because these were just agenda items. Of course, we don't know what is necessarily the desired outcome. Also, it's an opportunity for council to look at this, to maybe delete some, add some. So that's what we're looking to get in the end.
So like for the, the second bullet, call center staffing, I would probably look for the chief to tell me. I mean, we could say I had one, and you would say, "Thank you, we're only with one." I'd look more for something back from him. But actually, the speed enforcement cameras is one of the items that was in the traffic colony to put around schools to help persons slow down, not so much to catch traffic violators, but to help with the safety around schools. And so if it's really to look for catching speeders, at least it didn't show that in the workshop I was in. But if it's more about the colony, then it was one of those elements. That's all, that's why I was trying to figure out.
Yes, and we agreed, that's what it...
Okay.
We weren't sure when the question came up by council, so we just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's not like the Fremont camera.
Yeah.
It's not the traffic cameras.
Yep.
It's a radar feedback. It tells you what your speed is. It is a traffic calming device.
It's the one that changes from red to blue as the speed changes, right?
I think that's a version of it. Also splashes, flashes the speed of the driver.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
So we already have this as a project, so we can, we can kind of agree that this is not an additional item, and it's already one.
Okay.
Okay, so next.
Okay, so then the other two, traffic calming, including flashing, so there's a traffic calming project as well as a crosswalk enhancement project, which is the flash and beacon. So those are, those, both of those projects are in the current CIP. They are both funded. Staff is looking at locations. Again, it would be areas of high pedestrians, probably around schools.
Yes.
So we will bring an update to the February 12 Transportation Subcommittee. But generally, we're targeting installation of devices later on this fiscal year, the summer.
Kelsey Montano.
So the, I'm hoping that you're going to be looking at the sites where there have been accidents, deaths.
Looking at, again, areas of high pedestrians and, you know, conflict with vehicles.
Where there've been deaths.
Yeah. I would also like to add to Councilwoman Montano's point. I actually think that's a great idea. I know that when we had a conversation about traffic calming in itself, we wanted to, flash and beacon lights was one of them. But then we wanted to also address the speeding that was happening in the residential areas, particularly with the really wrong streets. So I know that comment has came up a couple of times. And I do know that community members have been outreach to some of us regarding the spinouts of the donuts that are happening. There's a lot of spinouts. If you go around, especially those long streets, you'll see them on the ground, right, the donuts. And so what's happening is they're spinning out and they're hitting cars that are parked along the side. So I would hope that this, the traffic calming, flash and beacons are awesome, but that's one of six remedies that I know, at least I know off the top of my head, that could help with that, with that issue in itself, without extra enforcement of having an officer at each corner. So something, I know some folks don't like them, but the roundabouts is another type of traffic calming that we could impose. Is that part of this, what we have already seen? But I, because I know that we have brought it up a couple of times during the council.
So what's in the CIP is a traffic calming project. As you mentioned, it, traffic calming has several different devices. Speed feedback cameras are one, speed humps are another, roundabouts and intersections is a third option. So we're looking at what would be most appropriate for the location.
Okay. In terms of determining those streets, is there a way that maybe we could have, as you look and start identifying these streets, would it, could we kindly just ask what the streets are that are being identified as we move along? The only reason I ask is because I know there's constituents, I know Raylene, if you're watching, this one's for you. She's contacted me at least seven times since, for the past two years. And I know that there's these really wrong streets in some of our corridors in town. And so I definitely want to make sure that we are providing some sort of relief. And that, I know we still don't have some sort of system to track commu- And that I know we still don't have some sort of system to track community concerns. But as we're all receiving, because I know council member Nunez receives, I mean, we all receive them, right, as we're out.
Vice Mayor Nunez.
Vice Mayor Nunez. And so I think it's really important for us to just be able to give that information back to our community.
Sure. So as we finalize a project with the locations, we could bring that to the Transportation Subcommittee. And then based on their recommendation and report to the council if desired.
So just to follow up on that, so all you have to do is tell them the name of the street. Because with, in the Traffic Subcommittee, we've mentioned that the streets that would get complaints on, so that's like.
Oh, yeah.
That would help.
Yeah, I was saying, he gets my email a lot of times. But I just want, I guess it's going back to Vice Mayor Nunez's comment in terms of, where do I go find it after? So if it comes to you and then it comes to the Transportation Committee, then how, all five of us, how do we get that information other than just going to the meeting? So I think it goes back to Vice Mayor Nunez's point in making sure that we are providing that information. So whoever the liaison is for the Transportation Committee to bring back a report for all five of us to have that, that you guys talked about, right? So I think that's something that'll be concerning our end. But thank you so much. I really appreciate your time on this.
On the donuts, Chief, do you have any thoughts?
I don't know. Hey, Steve Erickson, I, I'm really looking forward to your presentation next month, particularly with the traffic calming. I know our council's been working on it for a couple of years and we really went through the due process. Budgeted, passed budgets and funding and now, I know you've been working on it. It's really a ton of locations that your department is going to be addressing throughout the city. So I know it's not an easy task. I think twenty locations, or was it last time I looked at it? So I'm really looking forward to you bringing the item to us next month and we can have a deeper conversation. So thank you so much.
Steve, if you could just talk about the green bike lanes and then we'll jump back to.
Okay, well, green bike lanes is actually a state and a federal standard. So with respect to our resurfacing project every year, when we restripe areas, we are placing green bike lanes where it most makes sense. Again, based on, you know, bike transportation routes. So for instance, the TASP area, they've received a lot of the green bike lanes. They're not going to be all over the city. It's going to be where, where we review the locations and figure it's the best.
It's been a hit on Jackland and other areas. I've seen it, so people love it. And the state, it's a state policy.
It's a state and federal standard, yeah.
Federal standards.
So, and we have sent things out to the community saying, here's what that means, that is green bike lane.
No, we haven't particularly sent anything out that states what it is. Again, it is a state standard, so it's being implemented by other cities.
We did not try to have that done. I'm just thinking as we roll it out. To let youth, school districts, for the students, parents of residents, you know, we've not done that. And, you know, when you see a green bike lane, here's what it really means, I think that would be helpful as well.
For the third bullet on there, the renaming Dixon Landing Road, it might come up a little bit. So what we, not so far, but any additional.
When this topic initially came up with the council a number of months ago, staffs did some very preliminary work. There is a process that was put in place by previous councils. Sorry. There, there was a process that was put in place by previous council. We would typically follow that process. So some of the preliminary work that we wanted to have available to the council to inform you, things like the cost of replacing signs. We, we contacted Caltrans, for example, what would the preliminary cost estimates be for replacing signs along the eight eighty? And then we also, one of the things that we would need to do is to know how many addresses would be affected. Part of that is, it would be determined by the length of the roadway that the council, under council direction, would be, it would be the entire length of Dixon Landing Road? Or would it just be a portion? Depending on what segment of the roadway, then that affects the number of addresses. There are, you know, a handful of businesses that have direct addresses off Dixon Landing Road. Then there are a couple of residential developments in the mobile home park that all have Dixon Landing Road addresses. And part of the renaming of that road would be the cost of replacing, you know, reimbursing some of the costs of replacing things like business station area. You know, depending on how far the council would want to go to reimburse those costs. So that was some of the preliminary work that we did. We had created a couple of different maps. So there was a question about exactly where the boundary between Mill Peters and Fremont and actually San Jose is the western end. Where, where is that boundary? And I think we narrowed that down. So we had some maps that we were prepared to bring forward to you. But all of that is just being held in advance until we have direction from the council on where we would like to go with that idea.
Well, I would like to leave it on the list. I don't need to have it moved. It's no place ready yet from my point of view to be moved on. And actually, I don't think it needs to say Dixon Landing Road as much as it is naming over on the street in Mill Peters for Barack Obama Boulevard. So, but I like it still left on there because it is something that majority agreed on. But it is not something that, as I look at some of the other things that are on that list and further have on the list below it. That our mates used to start dealing with that.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that, you know, whenever we already move forward with that, we can, you know, spend some more time on some of the alternative locations. You know, that might, might be more fitting for, for the name. But I think that, yeah, it's, it's not in urgent need right now to, to be prioritized. Just keep it on the radar and we'll get back to it later, if that works.
Yeah, I think definitely as someone who voted for this, the vote in itself was just to explore it. So it wasn't necessarily to advance it. So some of the things that I wanted to know was the cost, how would it affect those that live on Dixon Landing? I would like to know alternative locations for what is the best name for Barack Obama Boulevard. So when I voted for this, it was to explore it. It wasn't necessarily to support it. And so I think that definitely leaving it on the list, because I do believe that's important for the overall city. But I definitely think it's not on our priority list in terms of some of the items that I see on this list.
So what you're saying is to take off Dixon Landing Road and just say rename a street after Barack Obama Boulevard?
Yeah.
Actually, there's a lot of new streets being with the transit area, so there's a lot, so you don't even have to rename that street. You can just create a name for a street. I think that's a great idea because there's a lot of new streets being created.
Needing a new street.
So, yeah.
So moving on to fines neighborhood parking, as C Ed mentioned, this, this is in the CIP for next year. We were going to give council an update on February.
Yeah, February eighteen.
Of February eighteen, both the fines parking as well as the limited, limited time parking. Yeah, so, you know, council will be getting that. Or we talked about potential vaping, oh, sorry.
Just real quick, so I heard a little inkling that the Great Wall is also considering paid parking like a valley fair. Valley fair's thinking about, well, it's gonna go to paid parking. The Great Wall is not considering that as, as part of the income. Can they do that on the road without us?
Yeah, don't like sign.
Oh, maybe, Cindy, do you have any, it depends. I mean, if they're going to a situation where they want to install some sort of meters that are not regulated by the city? And then cite auto owners for essentially exceeding the time limits that they set. They do have to come to the city and get one that's adopted and that would allow private property owners to essentially set up meters and ticket for that. Just depends on what they want to do.
So the reason I bring that up is because of the, the parking issue in that area. So they got the idea from, not every idea that comes from San Jose is great, but they got that idea from San Jose about charging for the parking there. At least that's what I heard and person's going to, it was true enough. And if we had to prove it.
It sounds like it depends. You know, keep the informers we hear advancing and type lines.
The next line of some of this, the potential vaping ban and dumpster days. If council wants to keep this on the list, we will start in looking, doing some sort of initiative analysis. And we can continue to incorporate that into the budget. Of the bullet of the quiet zone, some additional clarification would be helpful because this is one of those agenda item requests. And we never really talked about it, so council like us to explore the railroad quiet zone.
Yeah, I'll comment on that now if it's the right time. It's an item that is pushed forward through the Rural Subcommittee, which we'll be meeting on Friday. And folks in this town know that our city was really established as a place of commerce due to the railroad. And folks have been living next to the railroad for as long as Mill Peters has been incorporated, that I can say, if not prior, much prior. And so with all the new high density coming in, residents, long time and new are being affected. And we are observing San Jose, good things coming out of San Jose too. And I know councilman downtown, I'll give a shout out, Raul, he's, he's looking into this issue. I know there's a councilman down in the south side of San Jose, he's also looking into, working with UP to address illegal dumping. And so I would ask this council at one point or another to support this item put forward by council member Carmen Montana and I. So that we can bring higher quality of life to our city. We look at the TASP especially, we're bringing in really high property taxpayers. And I think there's a certain standard and expectation of folks coming in from all over the world, Silicon Valley, Mill Peters. That we have more of a tranquil city. And so I think the fiscal impact is going to be really the key deciding factor for the quiet zones. I know there's some infrastructure costs that our city may have to, if the direction of the council says we will incur. But I think it's worth taking a look at and exploring. And I also want to add on the illegal dumping and MOU of sorts with UP. As we have a history of some dumping and, and other things happening by our railroad. So I, you know, I know there's a couple of people here that support it. I feel like there's a little bit more support maybe. I would love to hear some thoughts.
Absolutely. I have a couple of thoughts on this. I've worked with both councilmember O'Perle and some other work that he's doing as well as other council members in San Jose. And so there's already an MOU in, in place with Union Pacific Railroad. So I think maybe just looking at it in terms of how we could enhance it, I think that would help our budget overall. We wouldn't have to incur extra cost. What three of the components of the MOU that they're speaking with, with Union Pacific, that I would like to see in Mill Peters. Definitely, thank you so much, Mayor. It is the illegal dumping. But it's also what happens when they're clearing out the railroads. Because as we know, there is a lot of unhoused members of our community that are sleeping on the railroad systems. And so they are working with, directly with the law enforcement agencies to clear out the spaces. But what's happening is it's pushing people out and they are moving into respective neighborhood jurisdictions. And so I do believe if we're going to be looking at the quiet zone, that we need to be prepared for some of those unintended consequences. One of them is our unhoused population, ensuring out what services are we going to be providing for those folks? In helping them transition into hopefully housing, which is a tough conversation. The other one is really what is the, the MOU enforcement at the state level? I know that that is a huge hurdle that San Jose is encountering right now. So maybe even having those discussions with our state assembly member and our state senator to see if they could help us with some of those resources. Lastly, with Union Pacific, it's really, what I've heard in the community is the big red, red happens at like two AM in the morning and it wakes everybody up, right? So my understanding is that that's a state mandate. And they're having a really hard time with that component because they are, it's in the state somewhere. And so as a jurisdiction that, that follows what state does, when you look at what state policies are in place and see how we, we could support that. And if that's something that we need to go and advocate at the state level, then please let us know. Because I do believe that the honking itself is what is happening. There's, there's some challenges about that. And so that would be some additional feedback if that helps anything, with any other direction, at least that's my point of view. Thank you so much for your time.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it on and actually looking into it for all those same reasons. And, you know, we're gonna have Bart going down those same lines too. And I'm not sure what their rules are, but they go by every twenty minutes. You know, so, so I think any, anybody that uses those rails, we want to make sure we do something about it. So we should start doing it now, so, yeah, we do have a plan.
Because I know, right now, the trolley, not the trolley, the light rail. It, it can't run before seven.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, I'm supportive of a quiet zone, at least of entertaining the discussion.
Yeah.
I, on, on the topic of illegal dumping, I think that I would like for us to expand that. In, in terms of looking at ways to curb illegal dumping. On a lot of the vacant parking lots, commercial sites, I know that a number of property owners have delayed. And, you know, it's, it's been an issue that people just dump their, you know, garbage there. It's a, there, there is a financial cost to them, it's a huge burden to them and a really a sight for sore eyes there. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can maybe broaden that a little bit as we think about illegal dumping.
Yes, yes.
It's gotten worse ever since free dump days.
Maybe even just some signage, you know, some, in terms of the, the fees, we can add some teeth to it so that people know that, like, you know, there's gonna be some consequences here.
That's a great segue. I, you know, it's, can we, dumpster days? If I, yeah, I think there's been discussions with our service provider. There's, you know, I think folks are gonna start to have meetings to see if we can benefit or gain a benefit for dumpster days. So let's let those conversations occur and let the earth spin a little bit. And hopefully, we won't have to put in the work to obtain dumpster days. But I do want to keep it on the list and I know with our budget, now, timing is of essence. So if we are unable to start conversations or gained, a gained benefit of dumpster days. I, I still want the timing, our request kindly, is to keep the timing for inquiring on how much dumpster days would, would be a fiscal impact. And so if we can keep that there as well so that we can be prepared at the moment as the earth just dictates.
So that, because it, it comes down to beautification, we want to have a clean city.
Yeah.
So we, I know that Julie had done a study with the cleaning of the streets, streets.
Yes.
I'd like to add that on there.
Okay.
As a, because we were gonna do a pilot program.
Right, and which is in the CIP, is this, you know, for next year? Okay, starting maybe.
Well, we don't want to start a study, but if it's.
Yeah, it's, it's already in.
Yeah, we already have it.
So it's for next year then, it's already in the process?
We have a budget for it as well, the CIP this fiscal year. We just, we just need the resources.
Both our departments are working on it. We're just stretching a little bit, but we're gonna be getting to that.
Both our departments are working on it, we're just stretching a little bit, but we're going to be getting to that part as the year comes, as the fiscal year comes, of course.
Giant.
Well, some of the conversations that I remember, this was from councilmember Montano, was because there was funding in this AIP, is that what we're all referencing?
Yes.
So I remember that conversation actually came upon because of councilmember Montano's idea to do a pilot program that was going to come out of a commission and it was going to allow community members to apply. That's kind of what I remember, or something along those lines. And then they were going to fund it out, the dumpster days was going to get funded out of that.
Vice Mayor.
Just real quick, before we go too far a few, actually, we already have a contract to have the streets swept.
Who's that?
They're not efficient.
And the only thing that has to be done is we have to pick a date. And actually, we have a map with the dates and everything. It's got a, what stopped us was that putting up signs and, and then telling persons, if you don't move your cars on those days, we're going to give you tickets. And the chief kindly told us, well, you also got to make sure that the city attorney tells everybody that we actually can give you a ticket. And so we sort of stopped there. So, so it's all really set, it's already all in place. So there really isn't a need for a study, there really isn't a need for all sorts of stuff. The question is, do you really want everybody off the streets on that day? And implement the ordinance that we already have, because we have an ordinance already. And that's what stopped us. When we looked and said, oh, we really do have everything. Do we really want our, at least to burn, to get tickets? We backed into the community's service officer, CSO, sort of that way. And we tell them that person can do it. And then you told us 57 other things that person really could do and should be doing. So.
We can always hire somebody else, just specifically for that.
No, sure. So, so we, yeah, we have some, so we have, the idea is that we have it all in place, I think. Question is, do we, do we really want to implement it? So I think we can leave it on to say, do we really want to implement it? And if so, let's do it, because it does pay for itself. But there, this whole thing about telling persons, we're going to give you a ticket, when in their own communities, they don't have enough places to park now. Think about it when you tell them they can't park.
Yeah, but it's only temporary, because.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Clean the streets a little once a month or something.
I'm right there with you.
All right, I love it, I love it. So I, I, as we, I'm going to conclude my remarks on dumpster days. I just really think it is imperative that we have dumpster days funded in the next fiscal year. And however way we get it, at no cost or at cost, I, I think we should be in a position to make that decision throughout this budget process. I ask that the council support that for the proposal of councilmember Montano. Okay?
Thank you. Moving on to the next area, primary area. So we have two items on there, community museum and park, which came as a council agenda item request. And then we also talked and got direction from council on looking at a performing arts center, potentially at that same site. So we're kind of looking at these two items as one effort that we would bring back to council. But if you have other thoughts, they'd like to give us.
I think those are, I still think they belong there. And it's, it's sort of in flux, the, I think there's an opportunity for the city to both have a park, the museum. Okay, that's okay. See, I can have it, but I can't make it work. And the performing arts, I think it's an opportunity to have all three. And so I leave them all up.
Yes, yes.
And when we bring that up, and the performing arts, I know that was one of the sites we're going to look at. And so the last slide on this one is on the government.
Backtrack on the other one, you sure there? So that land, that's the parkland, right, should that be part of that?
It's one of the discussion.
That would be one of the sites that we would bring forward as an option.
We won't miss it, yeah. Thank you.
So then this last one is government and administration. We've heard from council about we having third-party services to look at employee relations kind of matters. So that's something we're looking into and will take into consideration as part of the budget development. The second bullet, we would like a little bit of clarification. This was one of those agenda item requests on social media. So maybe there's particularly something you want us to look at, we'll make sure to bring that back. The third one was proclamation and commendation processes. You know, there is something outlined in the interesting handbook, I know, we don't. I'm not going to bring the handbook, I'm afraid to say the word. And however, you know, we'd like some direction on how you'd like it to come back. So if we can, if we can get some additional direction on those two, that'd be good.
Vice Mayor.
Since, since there were antia mind, that brought them up. So the proclamation, accommodation, we brought them up mostly so that we can have a discussion about a set process and, and a simple process. So that's, that really was one that we'd like to have a lot more discussion on, that we could all agree to. A good thing Rochelle isn't here because she's one that takes sort of the brim of it all.
She's probably here somewhere.
I know, and she's going to pop out and let me have it. But the idea is, we'll make it, and have her part of the discussion. We'll make it easy for her, easy for us, so we can get them all done. I know that some cities I go to, they tell me, we don't hand out anything, period. And others say, no, it's all done, it's all printed up. We just put the text in, but the mayor's and the council signatures on all of them, period. Well, so what do we really want? Why did we decide on the two? Is there still a need for the two? But let's have a discussion, that's what I sort of thought. The social media originally was on there for, I saw that we were going to use for our surveys, we had two things down, actually.
For the budget survey?
Yeah.
Well, we have Facebook, Twitter, and then.
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor. And so, so at the time, I had been trying to say, what do, what do we have? What do we use it for? Could we use it on a more ongoing basis so that persons would naturally go to them? So if we ever had a survey, they would naturally go to that. Right now, if you ask them, the number one, they go to its John's. You know, and so how do we get that sort of response? So was that, that's what started it? Then we said, well, should we have a clearing house? So that one per, it had the same flavor? And then we said, well, let's take, let's have a discussion about, you know, do we all need one? My response was no, since I don't have one, do I want any more? But it was another discussion, what did we want to have happen so we all could agree to it? And the more I would talk to persons, they would say, well, Bob, there really only one. And they would always point to Renee. And I would say, I never see Renee's, ever. I'd see John's, you know, I'd see three or four others, but.
City ones, I didn't.
Yeah, city ones, but I wouldn't see parks and ranks. John's I see almost every day, I see some central PD. So, so mine was just, what do we really have? So I'd like to see that one still on.
I, I want to agree with you, actually, I do think, I do want to see that still on and for us to really address it before the end of the fiscal year. I, if like the vice mayor, I'm always looking at other cities. And I, I see other cities really using the social media platform to connect with people at the widest platform. And I follow Tracy and, you know, City of Tracy, I follow City of Alhambra, I follow a lot of East Bay cities, and San Jose, of course. And I'd love to see all our departments engage. I think that police and fire, many police, all right, you guys got the most. Yeah, but I would love to see public works, you know, in terms of, and I know the city kind of posts as a, as a, as on a wider level for all our departments, so it's not like they are not posting. I'm not sure which page it was, but the city, maybe it was recreation, maybe it was the city government when they posted tennis court resurfacing and people were loving it. And I know other cities, public works. Yeah, exactly, you know, public works is the one, all this work every day. And I think the residents, taxpayers, they're really appreciating, you know, social media posts and to engage and to get information. City of San Jose has, I think, an immigrant affairs page, you know, it's very extensive. Even the city clerk, you know, in terms of different deadlines there are in the city. I would love to see every department that is maybe very customer service based to really put forward a little bit of social media activity. But hey, that's all part of the conversation that I want to have, and I want to second the vice mayor's.
I definitely wanted to add some comments, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So some of the things that I remember from the conversation of social media was streamlining the communications between council and the departments to ensure that we were sharing correct information with our networks. And so I know that many times, we, we all manage our own social media and sometimes we may use different words or, or different language that may stream a different perspective or give a different message off to those that follow us. But in essence, we're all one, right? We're one city. And so I know Jennifer was doing an amazing job in helping us craft the narrative and then we would share off the city. So I think part of the conversation with social media is really developing a policy for policymakers, which is ourselves, in terms of what is it we're going to share with our community. We can still share and we're still given the freedom to share whatever we want, because it's our own platforms. But I think when it comes to city, city messages, and we need to be very careful in using a language that really is coming from our city manager and our city manager's office, in essence. Because he is the one that's running our city. And so it's important for our, now, I don't know who Jennifer is, but you know, whoever Jennifer is now, or however we're going to move in that process, to streamline the communication to prevent any confusion. I also want to share that there, I am working with councilmember Justelle Haley from Redwood City. We are moving, helping move forward an assembly bill to help those in elected office not violate the Brown Act. Because we've had this conversation about the Brown Act. So just putting it out there, if you guys want more information, please, please, we would love your assistance on that. In terms of the proclamation and accommodation process, it was also to streamline the communications on who was doing what. And this was brought forward by one of the challenges that we have experienced in terms of the proclamations and accommodations. And again, this is a deeper conversation, but what I would like to see and give clear direction is essentially who's doing what, and it has to be put on the agenda. Because I think that would prevent so much confusion, not only on the dais, but would also give a transparent process for those that are watching us now. So I look forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you.
Councilor Vip.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I think a lot has changed since we made the request regarding the proclamation and accommodation process. I think a lot of it went better in terms of communication and whatnot. So, you know, I, I have faith that, you know, we can keep moving forward with our current process. But unless there's a need for us to change the policy. But, I mean, I, I'm very much comfortable, you know, how we have it set up right now. In, in terms of social media, you guys want to check out my cats on Instagram? Suzie's Mail Town, lots of cute cats.
Does she have a passion?
Yeah.
Does she have a passion?
Yeah, Suzie's Mail, Mail Town, yeah. Instagram, check it out, yeah.
Okay, all righty, all right, looks like we're moving forward, Ashwini. Oh, that's what councilor wants to tell me, sorry.
You could, you mentioned about the handbook, I, I would like to see it in the handbook. Because it's not just for us, it's for future councilmembers.
She did get the handbook, she got a handbook. She didn't want to go there and go, you made her, now you made her.
I'm saying it, because that's, that's which. We have to have a guide, we have to have a guide to guide us.
I, I do agree with councilmember Montano. I know we're, we're all a little, you know, we've had different experiences with this handbook, but I do, I do believe that we're in a better place. And I do believe that there's five of us up here and there's all of you that want to move forward. And the handbook really is there for, for historical purpose, right? In the case, God forbid, we're all on an airplane and something happens and someone has something tangible to continue to move the city forward.
So you can say, hands up.
So yes, that handbook, I, I do believe that we need to bring the handbook conversation back as taboo that is sometimes, but I think it's going to be very helpful. Now, in terms of the goal, Ashwini, what I heard you say in the beginning of this discussion, and all of these are great ideas. I, I, I really do appreciate every idea that's coming through. But the reality is, the question at hand was, did you want the item on the list? Or, you know, where is it shifting? The way that I perceived your question was, how are these items prioritized in terms of staff time? Because staff time is limited. And we've all seen each report of each department come before us. And so I just want to make sure that we answered your question. Or was it really to prioritize staff time and reprioritize all of these great ideas? Which I think all of them are great, I don't think none of them should be taken off. But if I was a staff member, I would take back this list and then just kind of hear our conversation. And I'm not too sure we gave you, which, for example, I've learned you can't do more than three. That's, that's kind of what I've been taught. We have a list of more than three. So I just want to be set realistic goals.
Steve, can you do like 50?
Well, we already gave them 50, I haven't just, the presentation's at hand before, because it's not just Steve, Steve's going to give it to everybody else. So we need to really have that conversation, that's a very tough conversation to have as council. How do we prioritize this? Vice Mayor, you always have great ideas, enlighten me, enlighten me today.
So, so, so I was sort of interested in, I, I, or maybe I thought you were going to take what we did today and carry it over to Friday.
Please don't.
No, no, no.
Okay, that's not a great.
No, 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 because Friday, right, is all of us again.
Yes.
And most of these are there.
Right, yeah.
So I, I, my, in my own little world, I thought, you're taking all this information to say, here's what we heard. And you were going to try to, in your own mind, prioritize them and say, our listening gave us this. Is that how you saw them?
So, and I'll, I'll get started and we'll totally jump in if we have other thoughts. But what we thought was, I think what we heard today was good. We, we saw one, maybe it's not a priority, some of the ones we clarified already on, what plan, and then we got some additional direction. So what we were hoping to do now is go back and kind of look at what would be the work effort and then have, then do go through that prioritization exercise. Because right now, we're not giving you enough to be able to prioritize. So we want to give you that. Vice Mayor, to your question, at the time we were putting this together, we didn't have that meeting scheduled. So we, we didn't know we were going to be able to have that discussion, which is why we put it here. So now, we don't, I don't think we need more direction.
No, I think it's really back to us now.
That's right.
Figuring out how this could fit into a budget process, what the work effort is. And then we can come back to, it's either we have existing resources, we need some funding, or sorry, we can't do it.
And, and so, and I agree, so that's why I saw you, that's where I thought you were going, which is, there was 10 things. One that. there was ten things, one that, none of them, which I thought fell off. Some that clearly we only need to learn to hold, some that were already in the CIP or someplace else. Others clearly needed to discuss more. But you could fit them into a council meeting? So Friday, you didn't need to see us again, as much as Steve wants to?
Well, we do need to talk about the process and scope, but not necessarily the dialogue.
Yes, really, that really is what, I thought Friday was, this, that was the heavy carry. But I turned it backwards, Chris is going to try to drag us back. I'm just saying that.
Focus on Friday, that's all.
I'm just saying is that, that's where I sort of thought, this was the attempt to gently get us there. Couldn't get there tonight, then we were going to be brought back. That's how I sort of saw this.
Yeah, I think some of these guys, very good, we have it. Up on you, so try to keep them there. Yes, now it's an hour.
Come on, we're still.
So, the greatest part of the, for last, let's do this with policy review.
I thought that was my closing.
So hopefully that's a better. So, so there's just, Jane and I looked at this policy, which we currently have. Yeah, most of them are really up standard, and best practices reflect the practice we have in the city, so that's great. One thing I found, if you look at the enterprise funds, there's a few things we can potentially do better, and we'll get some feedback on that. We have very well-established capital reserve policies, we're doing well with that. What we're not having is we save money on the general fund for the first rate stabilization reserve, but not on the utility funds. So they also have about 10% of our workforce, and we should also start accumulating some funds there as year-end they're available, as we close out the budget. The second piece is typically utility funds of a rate stabilization reserve. So as we have the council just approved the rates for the next four years, three years left?
Five years.
Five, even four years left. But sometimes we have fluctuations, and that's used to reserve, so to smooth out the rates over several periods, several years, and typically the goal is two months of budgetary operating expenditure. And that's the goal. And again, we would use year-end funds, which we haven't expended, and come back to the council, like we do with the general fund, and say, here's what we can set aside, some of the dollars. I do not plan to use the budgetary process to establish those reserves, because the rates are set, they're set within a certain framework, which is certain goals. And I definitely don't want to go back to the 218 process for the next four years, stable the rates which the council has approved. So those are some things to consider, and I think that's it for that side.
Alright, for that side, I want to ask about rate stabilization reserve. Is that common practice for two months?
Yes. It's actually a practice which is advanced by G O play, I'm in the finance association, and there's a good operating reserve.
Do other cities go beyond two months?
Sure, some do.
How difficult would it be for us to go to three months?
So we can set as a goal, if the council supervises, maybe we should set a goal of two months first, and once we accomplish that goal, we can look for, so we're fully at the council.
I like that a lot, I like that a lot.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, but we'll get, we'll export once it's achieved. Any other?
Any other feedback on this?
No, we're going to be separate.
Okay, that's all right. The second thing is vacancy savings, I came up in a council meeting, I believe in December. And I just want to quickly talk about what vacancy savings are, where they come from, how we use them, and then there was a desire to understand, well, how should vacant savings should be used. So first of all, we have turnover stat, we very much desire to fill vacancies quickly. We heard this today from the CSA leads of all department heads, that not filling a position actually impacts our operation. But sometimes tougher to, positions which are tough to recruit, some of their involvements of the units, of our units, we have to discuss issues about a vacant position, and many other facts which make a late recruitment. So what happens then, when we do have vacant savings, we start, if we can, we start backfilling those vacant positions with temporary staffing or such as contract employees, so a contract staff. It's important in general fund, we assume a certain amount of vacancy savings. So the way we balance this year's budget, we have a 3% vacancy rate, which sits in our department or the back of the budget book, because we know that we cannot, we know that we will not fill this, because we have these positions filled all the time. We take this as a consideration to basically reduce the budgets of the general fund in total. When you will see at mid-year, we will recommend to come back with recommendations to allocate those vacant savings, not the six-month of expenditure experience, to the various departments.
Clooney?
Uh huh.
Do we have any positions that have historically been vacant?
I think I have one, I mean, I didn't hear the last part of the question, sorry.
Positions that have historically been vacant, you know.
Just maintaining vacancies. I haven't, I haven't seen, I'm not going through, I'm looking at their, well, yours, right?
I can speak on that.
Yeah.
So I can speak on behalf of the police department. So we are always fighting the current, either retirements, employees leaving for one reason or another, or funding new positions. So it's very common for not just us in the Lopez Police Department, but police departments in general to have some vacancies. But at no time are we intentionally leaving vacancies there for savings. An example I would give you is our 911 center. You know, it's difficult to get people through the training program, so we've made some changes. The failure rate for training program is high, not just with us, but across the county, just for that discipline or expertise. So we may fill a position, but somebody may not make training, and then we have another vacant. Very, very common. So it's very common to have a police officer position, a dispatcher position, some other position vacant during the year, but it's not intentional whatsoever.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with the police department, I think I'm more so referring to any other department.
And I think I understand the question as well about, it's not so much the turnover, but it's are we keeping something historically vacant for some other reason? So if something just.
There just happens to be a trend, really?
I think, I'm looking at all the departments, and I don't think they have any that has historical issue of keeping. We have one hard to fill one, but it's not because of historical issue in IT. I don't see any, no. It's turnover is normal.
Well, you know, filling as in, I don't count it if, you know, we're contracting in the meantime for the service, you know. If they're, in terms of a, an actual full-time position, if, you know, it's never been filled, is what I was referring to.
Yeah.
It would be easier to actually see it. Because next place you're giving is a good one, a general one. But it's a third time in a row, third year in a row I've heard it. So if you were to say, here's how many vacancies we had in January, here's how many we had before, here's how many we fill, so you could say, you know what, you're right. There aren't any that have been consistently vacant, or, you know, we have a tendency in this one department that they have vacancies that go for eight months. Whatever, whatever it is, you can see. But those kinds of statements that are general like that, when we say, don't spend the dollars, let the council decide what those dollars are going to spend on. And it comes back, and what's said is, we spend it anyway, some other way. Makes me wonder, why do we, why did you bring it back to ask us that?
So I think what I heard you say is, do we have vacancy data which shows that some positions in the department have opened a vacant for a long period?
Yes, I have a report.
Okay, she has a report.
Well, see, that was, that's all, for me, that's all I like to look at.
We can look at that. I mean, if you give an example, you see at mid-year, if the council sort of supervised on the utility billing section, the position's been vacant now eight months in a row. But we had some issues with it, with the actual classification. We bring this back and then do the rectification files. And then you have, again, a regular turnover, what the police chief has, I have it with the council, and it happens, because we must people, but we can see the report.
Liz here, let's go on here, Liz.
Yeah, and we have another area, which I think is one of the ones that might be an issue. And public works sometimes has, there are some classifications that are in groups. And we had, sometimes when we're talking with our bargaining units, they want to revisit the job description. So something can be held back for a while, but it's not intentional. We're trying, we try to sit and meet and confer at both sides. You know, it's very, you know, respected, and we have good relations. But it takes a while, and we had one in particular, took quite a while. And what it does is it's a domino, because it's a one, two, three, and it'll hold up the whole series. So finally, we've got that resolved and filled. So we should see that movement. So that one was a difficult, hard to fill, but not because it was intentional on either side. It was just, well, hopefully it wasn't. But on our side, it wasn't, but we were trying to move forward with the job description.
Well, I think a report like yours type, that helps with assumptions, likely.
Yeah, we can.
How's each other?
Well, we lost our tech that thankfully you gave us last year, but she moved on, so now we're trying to fill that position. But as a rule, it's, we're fully staffed, except for the one tech. Thank you for asking.
Okay, okay, very well, very well, let's carry on.
So I think, let's, let me bring back the report first.
Okay.
And then we can, if there's a council desire, okay, it's probably, we can do that.
Okay.
So if this, hopefully four minutes, you answer it.
We'll pull the comment. Are there any requests? Cheers.
You had to add.
Can you open your mouth?
You have great voice.
You're going to pay the consequences.
Yeah, you have to sing it, though, like.
Sing it? No, no, I don't want to clear the room.
How many minutes? I'm sorry for interrupting you, please.
The one thing I hadn't heard anything about that really has come to my attention of late, and in fact, I plan on getting on board, but the Milpitas food pantry, that's an area that doesn't seem to receive much attention. If you've ever been there, you can see it's not the most desirable-looking location by a stretch. And I think it's worthy of some attention, of some investment. When you think about the fact that that's the only location in this city that an individual who is down and out can go to get free food and clothing. And the clothes closet is a disaster area, just simply because it's, the space is inadequate, and clothes cannot be displayed. The food area and the number of refrigerators that they have is, in my estimation, totally inadequate. But there's no space for them to expand either of those. And it's come to my attention that there are locations right there in that complex that are empty that potentially could be garnered and hopefully, I guess, adapted and cleaned up and made useful for the food pantry. They certainly need space for storage and stuff like that. So if you could give that some attention, and I don't know about, necessarily about funding, what that would take, but I don't think it would be anything that's particularly extreme. And certainly is worth, I mean, if you keep talking about, you're concerned about, you know, people that are down and out, that are unable to fend for themselves temporarily or for extended periods of time, that's a location they go to to get that kind of help, and I think that's a place that we can focus on to get help to those individuals.
Vice Mayor. So I, I'm not sure if they got anything through CDVG.
Yeah, I think at the last CDVG subcommittee, we provided an update that we reached out to them multiple times. I believe she was filled, so we did not receive an application for fiscal year, now 2021. However, we continue to reach out to her, and how we can provide assistance to her. But also, if you would like us to kind of go beyond that, and, you know, work collaboratively with economy planning to look at other locations in addition to services, you know, and storage areas.
We're subceding the win already, you know.
Yes, yeah, we're, yeah, I think we have a couple of numbers here.
Thank you very much, Counselor Montano.
So they didn't get the CDVG, but we gave them a.
Yes, this past year, we provided the funding out of the general fund. And since we started the CDVG process for fiscal year 2021 very early, we started this summer, we closed it. We opened it middle of September, closed it end of October, so for a month and a half. We reached out to them, we did not receive an application, however.
So there's still lots of time left, because we haven't got a word yet from the vets, right? Is that what Robert told us?
Right.
So if you decide you're doing it, then it should be a study, how many people are using it? Because with the terms that I've been there, volunteer, there's only anybody goes there. So you can accumulate a lot of stuff, but if nobody's going there.
I think we go through the same process we go through with everybody else.
Yeah.
But let's bring it back to CAC to look at.
Very well, I like that, I like that very much. Thank you very much, Tom. John?
I've got something too. I like the gentleman's not very rehearsed plan, other than the fact that my experience with one particular commission, and watching the website for the city, clearly, we are losing the benefit of a lot of contribution from the community. There are a lot of vacancies that sit on the, on the commissions that don't occur. So I'm suggesting that I will come back, perhaps to the city manager and to council, with some suggestions on how we can change that. We need not see a six-month expired, terminated individual still sitting there and not creating, or creating, as has happened with the commission, the House Commission recently, no form. I mean, it seems to me that we need to find a system or process that will work with the city, city administration, and with council members, where we can actually have fully staffed commissions active and contributing to what is happening in the city. So I've got some thoughts on that, and I will put that forward in the next, perhaps the next budget review.
Thank you. Okay, that's public comment, we'll go back to staff.
Stand up, I'm showing my community, all right? I'm going to put L M Steve. Because I have stretched my legs. It's good for the body, that's all.
So, you know, I've just prepared stuff to work on. I don't even do that. So there's a lot going on here. I want to thank the council for your guidance and your thoughtful comments to us, and your direction. Super helpful to everybody here, because a lot of times we do walk, we do walk out of council meeting, and we heard you, but then we're hearing different things, because everybody's, everybody has a different lens of life. So it's really helpful, we were purposefully directing some of the conversation for you and session. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the team, team's an outstanding team here. I'll set back to acknowledge everybody, every department here, work so hard. I've worked at a lot of agencies, and people work night, day, weekends. And it's not just hard, smart, got a lot of very smart individuals, very talented individuals. I want to keep them, I want to retain them, I want to make sure our city is fiscally helpful, health, and. And I will deliver a balanced budget to you with your guidance and your constraints in areas of restraint, I should say, in areas of, just be fiscally proved with all these areas that we're talking about. Because there is no big pot of money at the end, you saw the graphs, you saw how there's good times ahead and there's some challenging times ahead. But there's a lot of things we can do, even though we might have recession, we also might have economic development. The balance is that. We may put some money, some monies aside, which I know we will, for those rainy days or for those recessions. I think we'll work our way through everything. But overall, just my heartfelt gratitude to the team and to the council, thank you very much for this. I know we're not done with our meeting, we have a couple other agenda items, but those are my little remarks, thank you.
Thank you very much, to you, buddy. Wow. I, I think, I felt like I needed that speech at this time of night, at this point in the week, so. Great part. You really, you really brought out the smile and I really echo your sentiments and really look forward to meeting again for this topic, this agenda item, as we go forward. We all see what we need to understand and comprehend and deliberate and analyze and and work on, and I hope that the next time we meet for this agenda item, that everybody is continually refined as we really make decisions for the city, one by one and all together. Guys, can we just all acknowledge how cool Steve is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and we're not done, we're moving on to item number eight, action items carried over from a previous meeting. A resolution, master fee schedule.
So just a quick presentation. There are about twenty fees we asked to add to the master fee schedule that were previously approved by the council with the clarian where we can bring them to UMSA last year. And it's just mainly on his feelings, so if the council wants to approve them, they're going to.
So move. Is that a?
Vice Mayor, listen.
But Walter answered my question, so I will be out.
What's the thing, the second? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Fan, all in favor. Aye, any opposed? The motion is carried, moving on to item number eight. Be introduce ordinance number 304 skate park regulation.
Mike and I just realized, I don't have the, the point yet, but I'll, I'll speak to it.
The regulation is on the out there.
So I'll, I'll just, I will tell you. So as you all know, Molpitas Skate Park is opening this summer. It's an all-wheel recreation facility. Part of the process of opening a new skate park is putting in policies, procedures, and signage to not only protect the users, but also to protect the city. So by adopting and posting of the site rules, it really does mitigate the liability of rest of the city. The park is not staffed, so it falls under California Hazardous Recreation Facility Code. So what we want to do is follow the government code that states that public entities and employees are not liable for injuries sustained by persons who voluntarily place themselves at risk by participating or being in the vicinity of a hazardous recreation activity, which is skateboarding and being in an all-wheel plaza. And they're deeming it hazardous recreation because, it qualifies for hazardous recreation because this skate park is on public property, it's not going to be staffed during the duration of the park opening. And the fact that we're going to adopt, hopefully, this ordinance tonight, posting the signage requiring participants to wear helmets, elbows, and kneepads. So some highlights of the regulations, it's going to be on the sign. Again, users are required to wear helmets, kneepads, and elbow pads at all times. They're not allowed to bring in their own obstacles, ramps, jumps. The skate park is a first come, first served basis. It's open to all skateboarders, rollerskaters, cyclists. We also have wheelchair users that will participate in the bowl activities. And users under twelve years of age must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. Also, the signage will state that unsafe or reckless behavior is not allowed. Glass is not allowed, drinking or eating on the skate surface is not allowed because it makes the surface dangerous, it's a little bit different texture. Smoking and vaping are not allowed, animals are not allowed in the skate bowls. And users of the skate park do so at their own risk. The city provides no onsite supervision and the city shall not be liable for any injuries or damage resulting from the use of the facility. So the recommendation tonight, this fall, in the city attorney reading, allowed the title move to waive the first reading beyond the title and introduce ordinance number 304, adding subsection 7.02 to chapter nine parks of title five of the Molpitas municipal code relating to Molpitas Skate Park.
Okay, I agree. Councilor Montana.
Hours of operation?
So we, we want to operate as close to regular park as possible, so it would be like 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Really, are, are we A and E compliant?
We are, the, everything in there will be A and E compliant under the code, and that includes the, many of the elements themselves. Like I mentioned, the bowl, often people in wheelchairs will be in there, they're riding with them, they have a companion with them that helps them get out. It's an amazing opportunity for it to be all access.
I have a question in terms of, I know in some other skate parks, they've restricted the use of permanent markers and paint in order to have some sort of, just something if that happens with the tagging. Is that something that we could add to our skate park?
So like the graffiti resistant surfaces? Yeah, so most of it is treated with that itself. So that's perks of the bowls and the sides and all of the elements.
So it's already, okay.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you.
And I heard my, my good colleague, Councilmember Fan, ask about animals, what about skating, skateboarding dogs?
Well, if they're a service animal, then they are allowed in the park. But, you know, the animals themselves would not be.
Thank you, thank you. And then a more serious question.
Yes.
You mentioned some type of protection equipment, so what hats are we talking about again?
So you would want your helmet, you'd also want your elbows and your kneepads.
Okay, great. Councilor Montana.
Who's responsible for maintaining it, cleaning it up?
That would be.
Tony.
Yeah, present to you.
Yes. So it'll be under public parks.
Okay, any further requests by the council? If not, send me for a motion. So move?
So we.
I want you guys to pause, let me read the ordinance to you. If ordinance number 304, ordinance of the city council, the city Molpitas, adding subsection 7.02, chapter nine parks of title five, Molpitas municipal code relating to skate park.
We have a new motion by Councilmember Montana.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The motion is carried. I want to thank everybody for their contributions tonight. I thought it was a really great meeting. And a really great start to a new year. And it's not 2019, it's 2020, so it's a new us. And most importantly, drive safe.